At Council Plus Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Okay, welcome everybody. Before we get going, I'd like to introduce Janay Sternberg. Janay, you can come to the podium just in case they have questions for you. Janay is my selection as the new Finance Director of the City of Council Plus. She comes to us from Harrah's where Art hired her 19 years ago. And she, I'll let you tell a little bit about yourself.
You were doing a good job. You could have continued. Well, I'm very excited to be here. As Matt alluded to, I have been with Harrah's and Horseshoe for 19 years. I actually started down there before it opened. I held a variety of positions while I was there, from audit to accounting. I'm currently the Vice President of Finance for the two properties, plus I oversee the Mid-America Center in the financial world there. Lots of varied experience, none of which is in the governmental side yet, but excited to learn that as well. I have two boys. My husband's a veterinarian in Harlan, so I live in Avoca currently and commute back and forth and am planning to continue to do so. And it's kind of me in a nutshell and be happy to answer any question you guys have for me at this time.
We made the job offer on Thursday. She accepted it on Friday, which was too late to get it on the agenda. So we'd like to have her start before the end of the year so that there can be a smooth transition. She can work with Art. And so she'd be able to come to work on the 10th of December. And because we only have one meeting in December, we won't have another meeting until the 15th, I think.
We're gonna have a phone meeting though on the 4th or the 5th?
So, alright. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Alright, Budget Review, Art or...
Melissa will be in at 15.
Yeah. Melissa said she'd be a few minutes late. They have the generals in town from the Corps of Engineers.
It's not a budget review as much as it is a six-year financial review. Our audit was, the fieldwork is completed and it's in typing now. On December 15th, you should have the full audit report from the state auditors describing our financial condition and results of operations for the year ending June 30th of 2014. You can ask, that'll be distributed in advance and we can adjust the year specifically at that time. I know that'll be a very busy meeting as well, so I wanted to take the time now to do something that's done very infrequently. And that is looking at the financial condition and operations over a longer period of time so that you can, so that one can make an evaluation generally as to whether or not things are going in the right direction or have been going in the right direction. And so for that reason, and because I will be leaving very soon, I thought I'd in some ways try to wrap up this period that I was here. What I passed out to you were three sheets of paper and they talk about information for the city on July 1st of 2008 and June 30th of 2014. Six-year difference. I give a balance sheet. I show a little bit of what's happened with activity and then the third page, I look at our debt. Over the last six years, we've basically had four overriding objectives. Operationally, the city has tried to perform services for its constituents at a high level of quality, remain consistent and grow in quality and scope of services, and do it without necessarily raising taxes and do it within our means. That's been one goal. Second goal we've had is to keep a sound fund balance without necessarily overtaxing anybody. And the third goal that we've had is to reduce our debt levels and be responsive to what's going on in the various markets. If you look at the balance sheet, at June 30th of 2014, we had a fund balance, that's the bottom line, of $47.2 million. Six years earlier, the balance was $41.3 million. So in six years, our fund balance has grown about just under $6 million. So where has that growth come? Our liabilities are down $1.5 million. We owe less to people on a day-to-day basis in our normal operations than we did six years ago, indicative that, you know, we might be paying a little faster and turning over our payables more quickly. When you get up into the asset area, you look at receivables, they're down $400,000 from where they were six years ago. They were at $9 million in 2008, they're at $8.5 million now. So we, you know, we've been collecting just as quickly as we should. Cash, have we allowed that balance to grow? No. We, you know, it's a million dollars less than it was six years ago and we're finding that's a good number to work with. The one asset that's up is land held for resale and with the properties that we've been acquiring on West Broadway, Bungie and that sort of thing, those are some of the major components in that. So we're, you know, we're getting assets of value there. So we've raised our fund balance $6 million over the last six years. I should add, this is for governmental funds only. Sewer system and sanitation's not in here. If you flip to the next page, it shows the fund balances by fund type. And in the middle, I show the revenues that we've had over the six years and the expenses. And I mentioned earlier, our goal is to try to approximate revenue and expenses, not tax or take in a lot more than we need to spend. And over six years, our government funds spent $611 million and we took in $616 million in revenue in transfers. We take, for every hundred dollars that we spent, we took in $101 in revenue. So we've been meeting that goal of trying to, trying to, in a sense, run a break-even operation for the government. We take in just what we need to provide the services for you. And then probably the thing that's most interesting, I want to point out that that expense line is not just payroll, supplies and that sort of thing, but that's debt service expense as well. And when you flip to the next page, I think there's a real interesting picture. And that is what's happened to our contracted debt over the last six years. When I talk about contracted debt, I talk about the general obligation bonds we've issued, the loan that we have on the Bass Pro Shop, that's what I call the urban renewal loan, the settlement note we didn't have six years ago, that's from the transaction last year with Harrington McGee. Now we've got a small HUD loan for the Non-Purcell Building. Eight years ago, we had over $74 million in debt on that. This year, we've got $64 million. We've reduced our obligations, our general obligation bonds by over $9 million. We've paid off nearly $5 million at the Bass Pro Shop and scheduled that to be paid off by the end of 2018. We no longer have any capital lease agreements, we just don't make those kind of transactions anymore. And we're paying off the HUD loan according to the schedule that we have. So in six years, we've tried to run it operationally, albeit the Harrington settlement, we have reduced our other debt $14 million and we've maintained a fairly healthy fund balance that continues to keep us at a AA2 rating. So I think when, I think you can feel fairly confident that you've got sufficient reserves to address issues coming forward. Every organization will have to face growth issues from time to time. I think you've got a good foundation to do that and you have, you've got the right trajectory in debt and some other things like that. So that's really what it looks like after the last six years.
I have a question for you.
Yes, Lynn.
2008, that's when you came to the city?
Yeah.
So this is basically your history?
Well, I don't, no, I'm not gonna say it's mine because everything is a teamwork. It's a status of where it was then, it's a status where it is now. Whether it's five years, six years, 10 years, I thought this was a good, this was a good period, you know, because we, it takes us, you know, the reason to, in fact, the reason 2008 was important versus 2009 or 2007 is because I wanted to go back to November of 2008 when the start of the financial crisis hit. That was why, I didn't, I wanted to pick up the status of where we were before that because that was a fairly significant event over the last six or seven years. And to pick up in '09 or to pick up earlier would have been missing some of that. So that was really why I picked that point. You know, we had the, we had the financial crisis of 2008, 2009. We had when the bottom fell out of interest rates in 2010 in there. The flood activity, which really hit, the cost side of it hit in 2012, the revenue side hit in 2013. So you had to have those two years in there, otherwise we would have been having a bunch of revenue without the matching expenses. 14 things are pretty much settled down. Most of the, most of it, I'll call the funky transactions that have yet to be recorded are in there. So it gives you a fairly consistent apples-to-apples, as close as you can get given all the other stuff that had happened during that period of time.
Well, but still, I mean regardless of that, I just, this is your last meeting, right?
No, I'm gonna be here in December, unless you, unless you decide you don't like what I told you here today and you tell them to get rid of me sooner.
No, I thought this was your last meeting and I guess I can repeat this in December, but I just personally want to thank you and your team for all the work that you've done and especially in the realm of making some of the financial stuff understandable to people who don't maybe deal with it every day and the way it's reported in the press so that the public can also understand, you know, come budget time, this percentage of your dollar goes to this fund, this fund. I mean, that's been really valuable for, I think, for the residents and the way that you report has been valuable, in my opinion, to make it more clear and easy to understand. So I do appreciate that.
Thanks. I mean, that's what accounting's all about. It's, you know, get information to decision-makers so they can make decisions for the right qualitative criteria versus quantitative criteria. That's what doing it right's like. You know, a lot of times, before, I wanted to say that regarding Janay, over the last six months, when I'd made up my mind that I was gonna be leaving, many people came up to me and said, "Well, who's gonna take your job?" And the answer truthfully was, "I don't know." But often I said, "I'm leaving to make room for somebody that's younger and brighter on the job." And in her hiring, you got that.
Certainly younger.
Oh, man.
Alright, reviewing the agenda, anything on the consent agenda?
I just had a question on 3D, just wondering, that is a newer home on Pavage. What happened to that house?
What happened on that? What led it to the foreclosure? I do not know. But essentially, we started a 657A because it had been pretty much abandoned. They refused to respond to our actions, so they started a parallel route to get the property with their foreclosure. They had a duty to respond and because of that, they're willing to give us what we expended during our 657A action, which was about $3,500, $3,300. So they're gonna be paying that amount to us, which is what we paid to get the 657A title, and then they'll be getting titles to the property again and hopefully back on the market.
Wonderful.
There was also fire in that house that caused extensive damage.
Okay. I knew there was some underlying thing here. People don't usually walk away from, was it finished when it caught on fire or was it, had it been?
It was almost finished.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. That is sad.
Bad news is, we thought we had a windfall, but, because it was a pretty nice house for a 657A. Other questions on the consent agenda? Questions on the public hearings?
On 4C, regard to the trail through the Thomas Jefferson campus, I believe that that's about. Question for Dick. Have you been talking to legal counsel representing the school district? I'm kinda concerned here that we have a trail that will provide public access through a high school campus during school hours with facilities on both sides of that trail somewhat unsecure. And so I'm concerned whether or not all the parties have been looking into the potential for liability and other problems.
The, there's always those concerns, yeah, there's been some discussions on that. The way it's set up with this just being an easement for the trail, the campus rules are still applicable on that site. And so if the school has rules regarding smoking or no smoking on their grounds, it'll still be subject to those rules. So they will have those enforced and in effect. You know, other activities that occur on there.
I guess my concern goes to that we're effectively inviting persons unknown from the general public to have access to that campus during school hours. I mean, I don't know of any way that we're gonna be shutting off the trail access during that time. So I'm just kinda concerned about the security aspects in that.
Martha, just in case you had questions, I asked Martha to come.
Hi, I'm Martha Brechner. I'm Superintendent, Council Plus, and I appreciate the question. Our Board of Education discussed that at two different meetings and they're aware of the fact that in some ways, we're inviting guests that are not students, et cetera. But we discuss the fact that we think that there will be enough traffic that it should, in many ways, maybe even safer in that there will be an ongoing group of people that would walk by all the time. We also acknowledge the fact that if it becomes a security issue, that we would, we're aware of it and we would have to deal with some sort of security vestibule on both buildings and we're willing to look at that. But we think right now, there are railroad tracks there and there are people that are on those railroad tracks, even now, that we don't necessarily want to be there. We think that this will be an improvement to what it currently is.
Who currently provides security for the campus?
We do. School District does.
Okay. You have your own private security?
Well, we have a SRO, School Resource Officer, which is a Council Plus police officer. We pay the salary to the city for that. And we also have administrators and teachers that are watching both of those entrances.
Okay.
We think that the improvements over what it currently is will actually most likely bring a better group of people to the school than maybe if we leave it in its current state.
I appreciate your feedback.
Anything else?
Anybody else have questions for Martha? Thank you. I won't detain you any longer if you have something else.
I guess if you wanna scoot out for a second, Larry, I have a question for you as well. And just looking, I know that we're just dealing with the easement on this tonight, but as I'm looking forward, we recently had other bits of business and we'll be looking at the financial aspects of this particular trail project soon in the future. And the construction costs for the trail, as I last read, were about half a million dollars for that particular segment. And I took note of your great email about Fairmont Park and the plans for the rehabilitation of that. An excellent project. And you noted that right now, the city doesn't have the funds to make a significant dent at Fairmont Park. So I'm wondering, for that half a million dollars, if we delayed this particular trail project, could we get moving on Fairmont Park a little bit faster?
Well, what's before you now, the cost for the school district is not a half a million. It kind of looks like it because it's both the basic service, which we will provide, which is like $247,000.
Okay.
And then alternates that the school can do at its choosing. So it's more a $247,000 piece here. The difference between the two is that 80% of the cost of the trail is federally funded. Well, 80% of it is eligible for federally funds. So we've got almost $700,000 in federal money that we can't take and go to Fairmont with. Additionally, I-
But could you apply that to different parts of the city trail?
Sure.
Master Planner?
Well, if we could compete to do it, these grants are very competitive. This money, we started working on it four or five years ago and it competes really well, Councilman, because the concept of tying the riverfront with center city is really strong. And as MAPPA right now is completing a metropolitan area trail plan, and this is a priority corridor and they see the strength of this connection, it also allows us to get safe passage from the east end underneath the interstate and to Tom Hanifin Park. And right now, you have to walk either in the road or in the mud. So it does little bits and pieces that are very positive. So it isn't as, you know, there are projects maybe we'd all like to do a little bit more, but this is the one that's up, this is the one that's stressed and ready to go, it's been through all the approvals. It would be, I can't even imagine what would happen. If we say no, they'll just reallocate the funds to something else. So if this, this project has been in the trail plan for, since I've been here, it's been in MAPPA's plan for four or five years. It's just worked its way through. So I think we'd all like to do more at Fairmont, but Fairmont, like the trail plan, starts in pieces. And you get a good piece, you get people thinking about it, we got a good partnership, and just keep building.
Okay. Appreciate your feedback. By the way, I like the new look.
Went on vacation, found a beard.
With this trail, this piece of the trail, I'm really excited to see it go in because I, I feel like that oftentimes that some of our residents in the west end don't see some of the activity that maybe they think they're seeing on the other end of town. So it's really nice to see some of these things going in and to provide these trails and services to our residents, you know, on both ends of town. But I think that they need some more visual things. I think, you know, Tolly Park went in, but it's been a while and I think this is really good for them. And I think it's good for all of us, but I like seeing activity in the west end and the development of that corridor helps everybody in the city. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else on the public hearings? About the ordinances for first reading?
I just have a comment and a question on 5A. Where's Don hiding?
He's hiding, right? If he has a snake, he'd bet you.
Geez, you freaking, sorry. It's right in front and center.
Right in plain sight, isn't this place, honey?
I'm scanning the crowd and I didn't see him. You're too close. What do you, just for my information, what percentage of, it's a very nice looking building, by the way, I know you didn't design it, but please tell them it's a very nice looking building. Do you know what is the percentage of the square footage office versus warehouse? Just out of curiosity. Okay.
Can you come to the podium so people can hear you, please?
I'm Mike Dellinger with Advanced Southwest Iowa Corporation. And the warehouse is 90,000 square feet in footprint.
Okay.
And the remainder of the building then would be the office, the loading dock, the area that you saw in the drawings.
And the total's 125 or something?
155, I think, is the current amount. Originally, we're looking at 185, but pared it back on the footprint based upon current prospect client needs.
Okay. And then I have additional questions, but that'll wait until C.
You bet. Thank you.
Any other questions on 5A? Any other questions on ordinances on first reading?
On 5C? I warned you. But Don, this is more for Don, I think. Just switch places. I'm a little bit confused on the height. You, the planning commission approved 150-feet height exception. You gave us three recommendations, four recommendations, one at 125, one at 75, one at 90, or one, nothing. And then the letter in the packet requests 133 feet, so I'm wondering if, if we, even at the largest end of your recommendation, at 125 feet, that's still under what they requested. I'm just kinda wondering why we came out different than the planning commission?
Nice question.
And what, if you could also help me, I was trying to figure out what other buildings in town reach that height so I could just get an idea of what 150, I'm not very good at that.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but what's in the letter is essentially what they're requesting, 133 feet.
132.9 inches, Charlie, that was, isn't that the exact number? It's 132.9.
And Dick, you wrote the blank, but she recalled why they went to 145. Was it because of the-
My best guess is that there was concern that there might be some utilities on top of the building that might exceed the 133 and they just wanted to make sure they were approving a number that would get the job done.
Okay. So in your recommendation-
Do we have buildings that are this tall in the city? Yes. I think the question is, do you have buildings this tall and this massive? It's difficult to get your hands around how big the structure is going to be. I mean, I would just tell you, in drawing a, you know, square footage around the building and looking at the height, you are, your best comparable is probably the MAC. Take the convention center off it, stack another MAC on top of it, that's the size of the building. Another comparable would be to, take the two Mid-American Power Center, generating facilities, the taller ones, combine them, that gives you a good sense of the mass of the building, but it's about half that height.
Okay.
I would say they're about 260 feet tall.
Okay. So what do we do on the, I guess, Dick, then maybe, this is for you, what do we do on the recommendations? The highest foot is 125, which isn't what they requested. Do we just amend that to concur with Planning Commission?
If you concur with, according to the planning commission's recommendation, you're there.
Okay. And then why did you not go with 150? Just out of curiosity.
Personally, when they first came in, we were talking 90 feet. Now it's 145 or 133 feet.
Okay.
Even that was a concern with us. It will overpower that area.
So in your opinion, we shouldn't exceed 125? I wasn't sure if it was a clerical error or if you, on purpose, were 25 feet below.
We're concerned with the height and quite frankly, the enormity of the building. I mean, I will tell you right now, our codes, I think, are in sync with others. Going from 50 to 75 feet, probably not a big deal. But keep in mind, you could put 1.3 million square feet on this site with its current zoning 50 feet tall. Now, if you, you know, increase the height, you are going to allow the density of the site, not so much in a square footage basis of lot coverage, but the cubic density within buildings probably to be at least double, if not time and a half. No, that is not their intent, but, you know, no one knows the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on that item? Other questions on ordinances on first reading?
I'm wondering if perhaps we anticipate considerable amount of discussion on 5D, if it would be agreeable to perhaps withholding that till the end so that we could get through the rest of the agenda for the rest of the staff or-
I don't have a problem with that.
5D, if it would be agreeable to perhaps withholding that till, till the end, so that we could get through the rest of the agenda for the rest of the staff, or-
I don't have a problem with that, I don't know, the council.
That makes sense to me.
I'm not anticipating much discussion.
Good.
You assume, dear.
Carry over 5D until the final agenda. All right. Is that it on ordinances on the first reading? How about ordinances on third reading? Anything with the resolutions?
I have something on 7C unless somebody has something on ARB. Okay. I have a bunch of questions on 7C. Decipher my notes now. Um, okay, just kind of wanted to, the first point is, a little bit of clarification on 1.3C. The city has representation on the architectural committee as long as we own any part within zone 1 through 7. So do we intend to retain ownership of any parcels in that one, zone 1 through 7? That'll be my first question.
No.
No, okay.
Well, we will own them until we sell them.
I'm sorry?
We will own them until we sell them.
Until we sell them, okay. And so the architectural committee basically is in existence until they're built, and then pretty much it's a non-
Correct.
-issue after that. Okay. Okay, perfect.
The intent of that is, is essentially, you know, I can let Jay explain a little better, but we will set up a set of covenants. There will be architectural designs, and the primary investments, investors will have a seat at the table in that. Now, since the city owns a significant portion of land, we're a primary investor going in. But as time goes on, we will be less and less. So at some point in time, it'll be turned over to be essentially a private organization.
And the architectural component of that decreases as, as we go forward?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, are you the city's representative on that?
Uh, it's yet to be determined.
Okay.
But probably.
Okay. On section 1.12, do we have any idea of the value of the 4%? Second question is, who decides reasonable out-of-pocket? Third question is, I'm a little confused on soft costs versus hard costs. The design standard is listed as a part of that 4%, but it's also listed under soft costs. So are the design costs subject to the 4% fee as well?
Yes.
Okay.
You are probably looking at, well, ultimately, it'll depend upon the bids, but initial cost estimates will probably range in about 5.5 to 6 million.
Okay. So before 4% of that?
That's, you know, your water, your sewer, your storm sewer, your streets, your sidewalks, your streetscapes, all the things that are going to be in the public realm.
Okay. And then the, the out-of-pocket expenses, those come through you or through Arts Department?
Those would come to me, but you want to talk a little bit about that? What do you expect on that?
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm Jay Naughtle with Naughtle Companies. Let me just make sure I'm understanding what question you're asking. Out-of-pocket expenses related to the design and the delivery of the infrastructure?
Whatever is covering section 1.12B.
Just a moment, please. Well, it's, it's in here. It's not, it's not much. It's things like reproduction expenses for documents and drawings-
Okay.
And those kinds of things. I wouldn't imagine there'd be anything really significant as a line item in there. There could be, I suppose there could be a little due diligence on some kind of proposed element of that, of the infrastructure project, but off the top of my head, I don't really know what that might be. So I, I think you can, can expect this to be pretty minimal.
Okay. And then on, going to the purchase price, which is about $513,000, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding, that's the purchase price, but we're loaning him that, and then forgiving that loan, it mentions closing costs. I don't know what, whatever manner is common practice in CB Iowa. That's what was referenced. And then my final question on that issue is, the appraisal is almost two years old at this point. Is that, is our plans to get that updated?
I wasn't planning to get the appraisal done. I think, you know, part of the issue on the, the forgiveness, essentially what state law does require us to dispose of things for fair market value, we have established that, albeit it's two years old. But, you know, we repurchased this property with Iowa West funds. And Iowa West would like not to have to pay for the property. So that's kind of really where it comes from. But the, essentially what we would do is dispose of it. We would have a mortgage, a promissory note. If that parcel is further subdivided, then it would be equally provided, and it would be forgiven upon the development of a project, tax base. You know, office buildings and jobs and such.
Okay. I get that. All right. So, and we're, and we're okay with an appraisal being, I mean, it's still considered current?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
To your earlier question, soft costs is professional services costs?
Yeah. I don't think closing is going to be, you know, anything out of the normal.
Okay.
A thousand bucks, would be my guess.
And that could be standard text, it's just that I didn't-
But I do want to back up, in addition to your questions, the reason why we have this agreement before you is, this is a significant project, going to take a lot of coordination. It's not a project that our office can oversee. You know, we want to make sure it's done right. Naughtle Development has done the exact same thing at Exarban Village, where they're essentially assisting in overseeing some of the public improvements. Now, at the end of the day, they are public improvements that the city has to sign off on and, and approve. But there is a lot of coordination that goes into elevations, grading, coordinating with the next property to make sure that, you know, we, we got something too high in one particular spot that costs us all kinds of problems here or there. That's, that's the, the first, first reason. The second reason essentially is to market it. That's the second part of it. Think of it as more of a real estate commission on what we own there. You know, Jay will, and his firm will be able to market this far better than anybody in the community. Far better than, than I certainly can. So I don't think we will see the full buildup without that part.
Right. No, I agree with that. I just, I, I just was looking for a little bit of self-education on all of those points.
I, I get it, that there's a lot of work contemplated here, and thus your, your estimates for how much these engineering services would cost, we, we have for, for Naughtle's piece, 250 to $400,000, and then for the, for the second piece, another $250,000. That kind of brought to mind, we, last council meeting, we passed a professional services policy, and it was noted that contracts over $200,000 required a, an RFP, but RFPs were not done in this case, correct?
Well, in many cases, we did. We did an RFP in 2012, and we received a variety of, of inquiries, and Naughtle Development was one. And out of that process, we decided to enter a memorandum of understanding with the Naughtle Companies to go through and, and kind of develop a plan that we felt would be in the public interest, but yet something that they feel is marketable and buildable, and something that can be sellable on the market. So I would say we've, we've done that.
We also maybe perhaps meet one or two of the exemptions in that policy, the previous work done, that it would make sense to stay with the same people, or, and/or the, the mayor can override the policy if he believes it's in the best interests of the city to immediately select.
Well, I would just say it's a continuation of something that we started in 2012.
With an RFP?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I wasn't implying a criticism, I, I just think that this kind of illustrates the, the complexity of the process at times, that we need to make sure that as we're putting together the staff products, that we're clear in this, because that communicates to the public how, how the entire process has progressed.
You know, even when we started this, and started doing the planning, we, to relate to this particular engine item, but a related one, but we went through an RFP process on HGR originally, and selected them. So again, I would say it's an, you know, an ongoing project that, you know, we've got a policy that's been adopted in between, so I do know it causes questions, but that would be my response.
Before you sit down, I do have one more question. On 7B, the agreement with HDR, are they then the design engineer that's referenced in the development services agreement, or not?
Yes.
Okay. So the contract requires that Naughtle needs to concur with that selection, but we're voting on the selection before we're voting on the contract. You concur, I, you know, it requires it in the service agreement, so. That just makes it so much easier, not. Yeah. I just want to make sure, because, I mean, I'm reading through that and realizing, wow, we're going to vote and approve HDR before we approve the services, and I just needed to make sure that that was agreed before.
You did that to make sure we're paying attention, right?
No, I'm pretty sure Marcy just scheduled them as they came into the sire site.
Well, no, I mean, really, it's like, I want to make sure that the contract's not in place.
It's a ballot.
It's already been selected, so we need to make sure that we're meeting the terms of the contract, we're getting ready to vote on, so.
We can just change the order.
We can, and I don't know that it necessarily matters. I just need to be certain that that discussion had taken place, and there was concurrence.
And just while I'm standing here, I think, you know, when you're bringing up that contract, I mean, we, we, we have to treat this property just like anybody else who's preparing a development. I mean, we are going to have, and HDR's already did this once, but we will have them prepare a preliminary plan, and shows up how we're going to address the sanitary sewer and dislocation of water, and, and a lot of that's kind of resolved, but we just need to get it fine-tuned. And we'll bring that forth to the planning commission and council. And then we will probably file a final plat, so then we can create the parcels that can be then disposed. And since we will be paying for the infrastructure ourselves, and some of the issues associated with financing of that are still not resolved, but we will, before we get to that contract, we've got some months to do that, I forgot where I was going with that, but we will go ahead and final plat, and then follow up with the infrastructure. Like our performance guarantee, we're guaranteeing ourselves.
All right. Yeah, but as long as we've got Naughtle's assurance, then we've met, I don't worry about changing the order, I just want to make sure that that-
I, I have a collateral question, and it may be as much answerable by Matt Cox, or perhaps even by, by you, but I, I was, had an email exchange earlier in the day, that was prompted with some discussions of homeowners that lived right next to the levy, and it was about construction restrictions for, for people at, at the levy. And, and Matt, you indicated that there was a required Army Corps of Engineering review that was required before construction could, could take place for, for residential properties. I assume that that also applies to commercial properties, and is that review process being completed?
It's a dangerous sitting in the front row. There will be kind of a work plan, for lack of a better term, that we will develop along with the relevant, I guess you'd say, regulating bodies. Some of that due diligence, those due diligence conversations have already started with the Corps of Engineers in the city and so forth. So one of the, one of the first tasks at hand will be to identify what the ground rules are for the different kinds of activities that are likely to take place. That'll include a pretty high degree of knowledge related to notices and compliance and all that kind of stuff. So it's a long-winded answer. The answer is yes, there's things that need to be complied with, and we're just starting to put that together. The preliminary meetings with the Corps were very positive, though.
Okay. So I, and I understand that you'll need to present very detailed plans back to, to them for, for review.
Mm-hmm.
Can't put the cart before the horse on, on this, so I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we were expending a sizable amount of money for engineering services for, for something that we think will be approved, but there's, there's no guarantee that it will be.
Well, but we'll go into this, and I hate to start off a, a sentence with a but. Going into this, they will be the regulating representatives of the regulating bodies will be part of the process going forward, so that when we get to the end, we've got something that we feel highly confident will meet their, their scrutiny and, and ultimately win their approval. Just so you know, and, you know, there are, I hate to, I don't want to drag this out, but there are, there are so many layers and parts and pieces with something like this. Things that seem on the surface kind of simple, adding an engineering firm, adding another discipline, going through an RFP to do it, as opposed to maybe extending an agreement or adding to the scope. We just want to find the smartest, most economical, and simplest way to work all, to work through the process for all these different things that'll be going on at one time. And we know there'll be some differences of opinions, and maybe some competing interests, if you will, a little bit along the way. And, you know, part of our role is, is to make sure that Don and the city staff and all of you are, are effectively handicapped with the knowledge of all the facts, and then everybody can make a really well-informed decision as we go. Whatever the topic is.
I appreciate that. No, it's a, it's a complicated process, there are lots of bureaucrats everywhere, and I don't envy your job at all.
Other questions? Other questions on resolution?
On 7A, the, the home funds, I just wanted to make sure I, I understood, we, we had previously planned to, to put these funds to Wabash Place and then the, then the Selden project, and they indicated that there was a two-track financing way forward on, on the Selden place, and now we're going to move these funds over to, to Beacon Place. What's that do to Selden's second financing plan?
We were never going to allocate funds to Selden through the home program.
Really?
Correct.
Okay. It's, the prior staff package indicated that was part of their-
It must have been a misinterpretation, because we were dealing with, you know, our future allocation in 2015, 2014 is, was never contemplated to use, well, we haven't approved it for gun school.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting that second financing option into jeopardy for, for them.
No, no. No, we will provide them property tax abatement, so they can proceed with their tax credit application. We will provide the home funds, which were previously just allocated for multifamily, and the 2,000 figures we haven't yet allocated. We would allocate those to Beacon Place, so they can submit their tax credit application. And we indicated to Common Bond, which is the South 22nd Street project, that we would look at discounting the land, because if we sold the land, we actually have to reimburse the state. the state, so we might as well go ahead and do that. So that allows all three of those to be able to submit an application. Our ability to influence that is probably pretty minor, so it gives them all three an opportunity to be scored and evaluated, and the winner will come out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there weren't any unintended collateral consequences here.
I mean, I'm hoping quite frankly still that either gun school and/or Common Bond receives CWG funds through the disaster relief sometime in January, and one of these applications drop out. It'd be great if two of them dropped out, but I don't think that's going to happen. Then it'd be probably, likelihood of probably one tax credit application.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Other resolution questions? Anything on the permits and cancellations? If not, can I get a roll call for executive session?
Oh, aren't we doing the landlord?
Oh, oh, I thought you meant for tonight.
I think Al had that email he sent us.
And I, and I had something I handed out to you. No, no, no.
Oh, was this from you?
Yeah, these two things.
Okay, let's go back to that one. I misunderstood, I thought you meant for tonight's agenda. You wanted to put it on the end.
And we want to let anybody else who isn't, you can be a part of that conversation or doesn't want to be to.
You don't.
Be able to get out of it.
Don't need to stick around if you don't.
Yeah.
If you have nothing to do with the housing code.
Unless you want to stay around and enjoy the conversation regarding ordinance on housing.
My.
Don't trip over each other going out the door.
We are out over here.
Yeah, my, my intention on this was to offer, offer the amendment to, to the ordinance so that we would be voting on first reading for the amended language.
I say, can you explain?
Yeah, we're, I mean, this, this ordinance is in kind of a trap.
Yeah.
Phase right now anyway, so.
Yep, and, and I completely appreciate that there may have been little things in there that I missed or.
Who?
Misspoke about. Just so my, my other council members understand what, what the intent of, of the amendments are. First of all, the, the amendment increases penalties for, for code compliance. We, we had the old hundred dollar figure in there, and I increased those, those penalties up to $250 to make sure that we kind of keep pace with the times and, and help make sure that, that when we find folks who are wantonly out of compliance, creating self and, health and safety issues, not registered, whatnot, that, that we are upping the ante a little bit, if you will. The, the other thing that, that the, the amendment injects is some, some tenant responsibility in this. Currently, that, that wasn't in the draft. I'm recommending incorporation of the HUD, Housing Quality Standards, and, and their standards do inject some, some tenant responsibility. And there, so when, when they are responsible for, for damages or, or health and safety issues, that, that we have some additional recourse against tenants. And that, that will help provide some protections to landlords. The most, the, the main body of the amendment substitutes the, the current international codes as the basis for inspection. And, and I asked Mr. Carmichael to bring up the copies of the codes that we have currently incorporated into, into city ordinance, and there they are sitting before you. The, the draft ordinance that we, that we have before us tonight originally incorporated those top three volumes. And, and I would imagine that if we got into some pop quiz over what was contained in those three, three codes, we'd have some kind of embarrassing responses. Suffice it to say, there's, there's a lot of detail, and this is what I said in the, in the email, lots of detail that was noted in the lone ad hoc committee meeting, that these codes are so complex that, that actually the, it was said by the city staff that landlords don't have the ability to fully understand and comply with these things. Therefore, we needed a city inspection pro, program to make sure that we had at least a few city officials that understood what was in the codes. Well, that, that to me is somewhat problematic because i- if, if our intention is here to improve health and safety in these housing units, that sometimes less is more. And brevity in, in the standards is going to help not only the tenants to understand their responsibilities, the landlords to have a better understanding of their basic responsibilities towards health and safety. And at the same time, hopefully, we're going to increase the speed and pace of inspection programs, because you're not going to have such a nightmarish time figuring out whether each property meets every aspect of, of these more detailed code requirements, which frequently don't really go to health and safety. They speak to the perfect building standards that we want to see in new construction, but frankly, don't create health and safety concerns for a lot of the older rental construction that we have in, in our homes. So, so by substituting the, the HUD Housing Quality Standards, that's a grand total of five pages worth of, worth of code requirement that's being incorporated. Well, and, and I note that the, the actual inspection checklist is longer than the, than the actual code requirements. And the reason for, for that is, is because in federal government, they like to make, you realize this as much as I do, they, they like to keep things brutally simple, so they, so they repeat the same information for room after room after room. But everybody understands exactly what is meant on the form and in the standard, because it is, it is blessedly simple. These standards are already widely in use for Section 8 housing. They've been used by the federal government without serious incident for, for over three decades. And, and if, if our intent is to increase the number of inspections and make sure that we satisfy basic house, health and safety requirements, then in this case, I think that we are well advised to go back to that more simple HUD Housing Quality Standard. And that's the basis for my amendment.
I have just a couple of questions on that. So with the housing, the HUD Housing Amendment, then, so am I hearing that you're not opposed to an inspection process, but making it clearer and simpler and not so detailed and expansive? Is that?
You know, I'm totally in favor of, of doing what needs to be done in order to preserve health and safety. And, and I think that this will go a, a long way to, to meeting not only the concerns of Mr. Carmichael, but also the concerns of the landlord community. So yeah, I, I think it's, it's something that, that everybody can live with.
All right, and I'm not absolutely, haven't had time to really delve into it, but is this what you're proposing then in your amendment, that it would be this?
It, it's actually the, the standard found in the CFR. That, that's just a, a helpful handbook that, that HUD puts out.
Okay, so that's this. So this CFR right here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my question, I guess, is that for the Section 8, is, this is just, I think, I'm not, I haven't seen this. They have an actual, it's, it's really extensive, and it's chapter 10. And so, and that is their housing quality guidelines, is chapter 10.
Mm-hmm.
And it's like 55 pages long, and then they have their guide to using it, which is another 144 pages long. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm absolutely willing to keep an open mind on doing it, but this isn't what Section 8 uses. This is just a, a list of the things they're going to look at. But they have, this is, this is what they use for Section 8. They use chapter 10.
Well, to.
And it's really in depth, so.
To, to be more precise, what, what you have before you in the notebook, and again, this is bureaucracy at its finest, it will, it will publish lengthy documents in order to explain the, the published regulatory, regulatory standards.
Okay.
Regulatory standards are those that you see in the CFR that is five pages worth.
So.
So, so, so what you have in the notebook is, is HUD's explanation of what this all means.
Okay, so would we then, how would, that's what I want to know, because when I looked through that, some of it would be detrimental. You know, we wouldn't want to do that. I mean, right now, we're not proposing checking the refrigerators to make sure they have temperature. We're not requiring that it be inspected every time you get a new tenant to make sure the kid doesn't have blood lead concerns. There were a lot of things in here that, that I, if it was, I don't know how you can just take this part without, that this is what the inspectors that are going in are using to fill out this form, right? The chapter 10? So I don't want to do anything, and, and that's just something that would have to be discussed, but to incorporate it as a whole into the ordinance with just this, this doesn't really say anything. What about the interior air quality?
Well, the, the ordinance states that the housing office has, has the legal authority to, to draft regulations or other documents that explain its guidelines in, in more detail. By, by incorporating the CFR, we then boil that down to its most essential legal requirement, which then provides a level of certainty to both landlords and the city as to what the firm legal requirements are.
And so what would that look like? I just don't understand. So like, let's just pick one. The dwelling unit must have a kitchen sink. Oh, that's pretty easy. I'm trying to figure, exterior, exterior doors of dwelling unit must be lockable. And then, then here they tell you what they mean by that. And then the windows must be in a certain condition. And here they tell you what they mean by that. You would incorporate this solely without any of this explanation of what their intent was?
That Mr. Carmichael can, can create or adopt those as part of, of his guidance on how he's going to run the program, but we would still have that lone five pages of legal authority. What I'm attempting to do is boil that down, because right now, our legal authorities are that massive amount of paperwork right there that goes into great excruciating detail. That is the law as it exists today. And, and if nobody understands it but a, but a handful of housing officials, then there's a number of people that have problems.
But isn't it subjective? I mean, I just, I read this, and it's like, well, so we're going to leave it to each of the inspectors to make their determination on what this means? Because if, if he's got to write the stuff that goes with this, I'm imagining he's going to take it from the code. I mean, where are you going to get it from? You got to have something to back this up.
Well, again.
I just don't want it to be, you know, acceptable criteria, if you say you have to keep it heated to an appropriate temperature. Well, that is what's appropriate. So then he's going to have to set what's appropriate. Well, where's he going to get that from?
Well, where are we getting it from now?
Well, that's what I'm assuming is going to go back to that.
And, and that's, and that's part of the, that's part of the problem, is that right now, i- if I asked you what was the standard in, in the code book, you probably have to go and spend, spend quite a bit of time to, to look it up, to, to locate it.
Oh, I would, but if I did it for a living, I'd probably.
But, but right now, we, we have this, we have the HUD standards already in application for every Section 8 house in the country, and much less in, in the city. So, so what we have here is a set of standards that have been used now for three decades, and I haven't come across anything that indicated that there were large wholesale inspections with health and safety when it came to application of the standards on Section 8 housing.
But I guess what I, and, and you've got to excuse me, because I'm just not tracking, because I am definitely open to it, but I don't understand it. Because I, the thing is, is that, yes, you have this law, but when they go in to do the inspection that you're talking about, they're using all of this to make that inspection, but you don't want to make all of this part of this, and they wouldn't just have this without this. So I'm very confused.
Well, I'm.
I don't understand.
And how does that vary from that?
Yeah, it really doesn't. If you look at this, just what I've looked through, glanced through, because I just got your email.
And, and that was quite intentional, because I didn't want to create a, an open meetings issue.
Yeah, and that's fine. I, I mean, I have no problem with that. I mean, it was said to me by somebody that visited my office today that this is a potential, it's solution, so I printed it. Of course, I didn't have to unread the whole thing. So I just started flipping through it, and it's like, they require that the foundation be secure, they require that all lead paint be removed, they require that the windows open and close, that you have emergency exits, that, you know, it kind of followed right along with what our inspection form says.
But this also contains a, a number of issues that have very little, if anything, to do with, with health and safety concerns. And, and right, and right now, we, we, we have landlords potentially subjected to a lot of legal and financial risk, and in turn, that, that creates a lot of, really immeasurable risk for their bankers when it comes to, when it comes time to either sell or, or purchase property. Because if, if they're unsure how long they're going to be able to, to do business under these more detailed regulations that are really up to Mr. Carmichael to determine when and how to, to enforce, then it creates a certain amount of, of, of legal and financial risk. By adopting these more simple standards that have been used successfully by the federal government for, for years, we are, we are putting a very simple but firm legal definition, and then, then allowing room for, for interpretation and application later on. But at least the, the landlord community would have a hard set of legal requirements through the CFR, which they, which they could then rely on.
Well, we have an existing ordinance on the books, and what's on the agenda this evening is an, an amendment to that ordinance. So, you know, for my position, I'm going to focus on the ordinance and, and that's before us. You've given amendments, Nate has given amendments. I don't know who this came from, because there's no name on it.
I gave you the one page, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so Dick gave us something. We have a whole bunch of information in front of us. We've got seven weeks to study all this. Nate, would you?
Why seven weeks?
Well, whatever, maybe it's six weeks, I don't know.
Seven weeks.
Seven weeks.
What's in seven weeks? Third reading.
The third reading, yeah. So, so this is not going to be decided tonight, but I do have a question, Nate, because you handed something out.
Yes.
Right. You handed something out as well.
I did, and mine mostly does not go to what is probably the, the most, going to be the most talked about, the, the, whether we go to an active rental inspection. But I do write some things in there. I mainly, I handed two things out. The first was, it was to remind myself, I, when I was first going through this, I, I referred back myself to the, the old appeals process. If you didn't, if you, if you felt aggrieved by what the inspector said, and you, you informally appealed, if you will, to the, the chief building inspector, and you still felt aggrieved, we had a procedure that, how you went to the Board of Appeals. And, and I, I had to be reminded that last year, we changed that significantly, and so.
This is the new?
This is the new, the relevant part of, of Title 13, Chapter 1, about that. And I thought it might help you refresh your memory. It certainly helped me quite a bit as to that, that piece of, what, what we approved last June 24th of 2013.
And then, and then Al just summarized his, his paperwork. Would you, would you mind summarizing yours?
Yeah, no, I can. A, a lot of it, quite frankly, is what I have attempted to do, and it's, 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 it's just the nature of the law over time, as you can see, at various points in the last several decades, different parts will get updated, and so over time, it just, it's hard to read in English, so to speak, and plan. And so I, I just suggest trying to make it a little bit more straightforward. Sometimes that means the sentence gets longer, but most of the time, it means it gets shorter. So, for example, excuse me, at the very beginning, the current one, it talks a lot about purpose and, purpose of the law and the intent of the law, but kind of goes back and forth between them. I just suggest we state it out more of a, a regular sentence. This is the purpose, and then to achieve this purpose, the following are the intent. Those don't change substantively, or I don't intend to change substantively, what our current purpose intent is. I just try to put it into plainer English. And that's what a lot of this is. And if you want, I, I will just point out the ones where I suggest a substantive change, that's a lot less to explain.
Okay, because, because this is on top of the, the red and the yellow that's on in here. I mean, we, we have a lot of.
Yeah, it, green, green is, green is what I suggest be added, red is what I suggest be taken out.
Okay, I have one quick question before you get into the depth of this for Dick, just out of curiosity. There is a lot. I mean, between your stuff and. between your stuff and Al's, if there's a lot, what happens, I mean, can we delay this until next? Because what happens if we go through today and just say, okay, we're passing, like, what Matt put on there, but yet we know we probably wanna make changes? Then we make major changes at the second, whoever put it on there, Marcy did, whoever put it on there. Uh, you know, I mean, then we wanna make, like, Al's change, or Nate, can you, I don't know what our choices are.
It may require additional reading.
Yeah. That's why I'm wondering if we're better off waiting until, like, can we delay it so we can all read? I mean, there's a lot of-
Yeah, we're grinding a lot of sausage here.
I, I, in, in my opinion, I would like the process to continue, because, I, I mean, I think we, you know, we all know what our job is and, and to review this, and it's not any different from other ordinances that come before us that are changed, um, throughout the term of the three, of the three readings. So I, I am gonna make a, a commitment to, um, to buckle down and read the new materials and be prepared to discuss it in, in two weeks. Uh, I, I think we've, you know, tonight, we're just setting it for public hearing, and I think the public hearing is a very important, um, component of any ordinance change. And, uh, and I look forward to the public hearing to hear the other comments that are out here. I mean, you know, we've got this paperwork, but I'm also interested in hearing, um, what, what, uh, what is said at the public hearing. So I, I, I definitely would like this to go to public hearing on schedule.
If you, if you extend it, and this is just my recommendation, but if you extend it, I think you extend the, the public hearing too, because if you go to the public hearing without substance for people to look at, it's a pretty difficult for the public hearing.
That's what I'm worried about. Right, that's what I'm worried about. We've got all these different ideas out there, and we're gonna get to doing it from now.
Yeah, well, why, why don't we have substance? We already have a, a, a draft that's been put on the, the agenda.
Well, we do, but you're, you're suggesting significant changes to it. He's suggesting significant changes to it if, well, if this body adopts, yeah, yes, no, I, yours are definitely significant changes. So, if this body adopts yours, people are gonna come to the public hearing expecting it to be the initial draft, and I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, and that-
Well, I struggle, I struggle with the idea, when we, when, the chicken versus egg, when do we bring this up? And I couldn't think of a better time than at first reading, because, I mean, I could've, I could've drafted this later or just held on to it, uh, and then sprung it at the public hearing, but that seemed horribly unfair, because then truly the public, it wouldn't be in the packet. Um, so, the only way I can think to do it is at first reading is, and I don't think a lot of it truly is, uh, mine are truly is much changed from the current. Um, but, but of course, you can decide that, but that, that's, that's my position, um.
Can you, can you zero in on that? Cause I, I, I mean, you were going there, and then I think I was the one to interrupt you, so I apologize.
No, no, and, and I don't wanna go through every line, but if you, if you, if you wanna talk about a specific one, I'd be glad to, but what I'd like to do is, a, a lot of it is just changing the word order to make it clear in English, or remove. It's clear to us in regular English what it's saying, but trying to enforce it, um, you could, you could reasonably come up with alternatives that I don't think that's what it says, but I just, I just think, I hate having laws that people read and you can ask a lawyer and you can get two plausible answers. When we all kinda think it's one way, I just prefer we write it that way. Uh, so a lot of it is what I think we intend to do. Uh, some of it, I do suggest substantive changes, like for example, on the first page, that title seventeen, chapter one, section five, subpart D. The current code says, uh, the current, excuse me, title seventeen housing code says, if your house was constructed before codes existed, which a lot of them do in our community, um, you got the benefit of the doubt, unless, y- you got the benefit of the doubt. You know, the current code's grandfathering, if you will, in regular English. Um, it didn't say that if you converted it, or you substantially rehabilitated it at a time when there weren't codes, that you were still okay, and I thought that, I think we probably meant it to include that over time, but we don't. So if you converted it after World War Two, when perhaps there wasn't a code, maybe even after World War One, when there definitely wasn't a code, um, the current code would hold you to modern standards because of that conversion in nineteen eighteen. I don't think that's what we mean, but that's how it's written. And so I say, unless, i- if it's constructed, it's good. If it's standing and constructed, there's no way around it, it's good. It meets, it's deemed compliant with the current code. But if you changed it significantly, or remodeled or restored it, or you converted it back when there weren't codes, as long as it's not rendered horribly unsafe, it's gonna fall over or catch fire, basically, uh, you're grandfathered. I, I think that's probably what we mean, but it doesn't say that. So that's a substantive change. And then going on, a lot of these are not, I, I think we should define building official, that's just for ease of reading, because otherwise, if you don't, we constantly have to say the beef, the chief building official and/or his designee and/or all that kinda stuff of the city of council bluffs in Potawatomi County, the state of, I just, we define building officials, so that's what we say, and it means all those things. So it reads like an English sentence instead of complete legalese. Um, I, I put the minimum quality standards, it used to be in the purpose, which is not really a purpose, with the greatest respect. It's more of a, a definition, so I, I, I would rather, when we specifically define something, put all the definitions in the same part of the ordinance, just because then it's not a trap for the unaware.
Page four, number nineteen.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I, I don't change it, I just put it where I think it makes more sense. I, I don't, I'm just trying to avoid traps. You know, if you don't re, if, if, if it's in the wrong place and you don't know where to look, I, I hate laws like that. Um, and on page five, number twenty-nine, I just make the word rental property. I, I define it so that when you read the sentences going on later on, you don't have to keep saying dwelling unit, dwelling, dwelling unit, rooming house, and/or rooming unit, when you mean rental property. I, I just think it makes the sentence of, of a lot easier to read. I also suggest we define the word family, because the, the code is currently written, uh, that's page five, number thirty. Under rumor, we, we talk about what family means, and we, we incorporate by reference, we, we refer to title fifteen, and I bet at one time, it defined family in title fifteen, but the, the current one doesn't. So whatever we define it as, and I can't find it anywhere else in the code, and, and I'll have to ask Dick, uh, some of those things, I, I know there was a case, I believe it involved the city of Ames, about how, some modern restrictions on how, how you can define family. But I try to define it there as just a start, because I think we've gotta define it somewhere.
It, it's not defined above either.
No, it's not defined any, it's not defined, I, I suspect what usually happens in that sort of case is it probably was in title fifteen at some time, we made a change.
We have truly ducked the, uh, challenge of defining what a family is. That's intentional.
Wise.
Well, if that's the case, then I think we oughta just take out the reference that it's in title fifteen, if that's what we intend to do, cause i- it's not, you know. Fair enough, in this amendment, it does continue to refer to on page six, it talks about keeping the international property maintenance code. I, I am also open to hearing other ideas. I, uh, this draft, again, I'm just trying to clear up what's currently there, so it, it didn't change that.
Which, by the way, I just wanted to, i- if I didn't make the point the first time, that, uh, that the HUD code, it does qualify under the Iowa statute as an acceptable, uh, rental inspection program option.
Is, is, that's an estate statute, right?
Correct.
Could you, do you happen to know the number of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I'd love to read it. I, I'm not terribly familiar.
Uh, it was Iowa code section three sixty-four point seventeen, first paragraph.
Okay.
Under what, one, one E.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'll, I'll take a look at it. Um, okay, a lot of the other, I, it's just clean up, you know, the law should be in the present tense, so I take out all the shells or wills when it's talking about the present. Again, I'm just trying to make it read in English. Um. All right, uh, if you go to page nine, the very last, so it's title seventeen, chapter nine, section twenty. Uh, that is the owner. I take the word landlord out in all of the newest, uh, recommended standards and in some states' court cases. The word landlord, which is about eight hundred years old, seriously, um, just isn't used anymore, and I, I think the word owner is more appropriate. So I took the word landlord out. Um, this is the registration paragraph, and the way it's currently written, um, I think it's got to be biannually. I know, I, I looked, and there's been some discussion back and forth. In American English, biannually, B.I., annually, is starting to mean every other year, but in, in strictly speaking in proper English, biannually is, is every other year, and biannually is twice a year. So, I don't wanna be pedantic, but at the same time, until English gets, gets rid of the word biannually, why don't we stick with the one that's clear, cause otherwise, somebody could be inspected four times in the same period of time rather than once.
No, I actually agree with that one, cause I was confused by it too. I've always known biannually to mean twice a year.
And I didn't, to be honest, but I looked it up, and I'm wrong.
Okay, so, but, so now I'm confused, cause I know, I, I know what biannual means, but what is biannual?
Biannual means, I think, what, what I thought biannual meant, which is every other year. And strictly speaking, biannually means twice a year.
Twice a year.
Bi- and versus bi-
Now, there, I, in some of the dictionaries, particularly the American English ones, there's a trend towards that meaning that, but it's still not the accepted proper.
Yeah, but our attempt is not twice a year.
And I just wanna make it very clear, rather than to have a fight over what we intended.
Okay.
I just don't want anybody to think that it's twice a year when it's once every two.
Cause that would be ridiculous, and I, I just don't wanna cause landlords that sort of trouble and ambiguity twenty years down the road.
Wow, I'm glad everybody didn't laugh at Al when he was going through his list. That's really rude.
Well, when we, when we look at, when we look at this, uh, it, the other thing I, I'm concerned about is, what is the registration period? When is it open? To me, it ought to be the month of December for the next year. Otherwise, I mean, can I register in July? Can I register in June? Can I pre-register five years in advance? I could, if you don't tell me when the period is.
What if, what if they get it like in the middle of the year then?
Uh, like a new, that's covered, uh, if it, if, if it was owned by someone else and was already registered, the tran, it still transfers. If it's a new construction, then it's, I believe, thirty days. So I believe that's covered, but if, if you read it and it's not, I, I certainly am not perfect.
So, so ju- just to clarify, so the green underlined, that's, that's stuff that you considered not-
Yeah, I tried to make it traffic light, yeah.
The green underlined is not new.
Green is new, red is takeout.
Is it takeout if it's not struck through, Nate?
Uh, I'm sor-
I like your rental.
Oh, yeah, if it's, if it's not either of those things, I didn't change it from what we currently have on, or the current draft we received from Steve. It's not necessarily what's on the books.
So the red is new that is important, the green is new that you think is just, like?
Well, the, the red is what I take out, and the green is what I'd replace it with. Most, it, many times, and sometimes the green is, I'm just trying to make the sentence flow in English.
What is red, what, what is red that's not struck through? Like on page ten, you ha- you ha- you ret, you inserted an email address. I assume that's something new, because-
That, that, that is new, and, and occasionally, uh, I'm n- I'm not a, a, an expert at word, and sometimes I, I didn't get the colors right.
Okay, that's fine, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I do apologize.
Cause there were probably no emails years ago when, when, yeah.
I do apologize. I, I tried, but there are ti- there are instances, to be sure that I-
So the green stuff is essentially the, the, something that we need to be looking at more, more closely, because it's, you're not just changing a, a word or, or clarifying, it's something you're new, or am I mistaken?
Well, a lot of, the easiest way, there, it'd be one of two things. The first would be, take for example, on page nine, um, part C, under the first heading.
Yeah.
Um, I ju, I, I move a clause to make it clear in English what we're, what we're modifying.
Oh, I see, I see, yes, yes, yes.
So, so when you see a red, and you see a green next to one another, nine times out of ten, so to speak, I'm just changing the wording.
Your flow, your, it flows better. I gotcha.
Yeah, and, and, but if you see red, a lot of red, or a lot of green, and not the other color next to it, I'm probably doing something you wanna look at even more.
Flip to eleven for me, will you just?
Sure.
On eleven, and if, uh, right under seventeen point oh nine point oh three oh, regular rental inspections, regular rental inspections of, that, as long as it's not lined through, you wanna retain that red?
Yes, exactly. That, that for sure is, is, is a hundred percent accurate in here. Anything that isn't lined through, I recommend we keep.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that is, that is for sure.
I think so, you're reading that all on your phone.
Okay.
But a lot of, a lot of them you'll see is just trying to make the sentence flow.
That's what we're trying to stop earlier to get, cause Steve's trying to read this all on his little phone.
Oh, goodness.
Cause he didn't have a copy of this, so he was trying to read it on my phone.
You didn't have an extra copy?
I'm sorry, I-
I have some, some of the germanic issue bring up with, with the HUD code that I want you all to understand.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you.
You don't have a copy of this though either, right, that we're going over right now?
Yes, ma'am, I do have this.
No, you don't.
Then I'll take mine back.
I thought you didn't have one.
I, I, I emailed him one right before, I, I didn't wanna email my, my colleagues, cause I didn't think it was fair.
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that Steve knew what we were, they were looking at the phone and like-
All right, so back to page eleven.
Uh-huh.
Matt, what was your?
Uh, well-
No, it's just, um, and he answered that there, if you go to seventeen point oh nine point oh three oh, it actually has red that's not struck through, and so I just wanna be certain that he doesn't wanna eliminate all the red, he just wants to eliminate anything that is struck through.
Ma'am, I use red as a-
When you made your changes.
Not as a deletion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and so, so I, I, the red and green isn't perfect, but the cross through is.
So the red might be some of Steve's not named.
Steve's, from Steve's original.
Especially if it's not underlined, yes.
It's Steve's.
I think what you start reading through, it doesn't seem, I mean, I'm looking at it, it seems to make kinda sense.
A lot of it, I, I'd, I'd encourage you to read the substance of it, if, 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 if there's something you'd like different. Whoever wrote it probably doesn't matter so much, would be my suggestion. Uh, all right, so, s- so at the bottom, it's nine, I talked about how, okay, let's make it a, I suggest a month period of registration for the next year. So go into page ten, I suggest an application form, uh, we direct, the building official to come up with one. Uh, it's gotta have certain information on it, very straightforward, the current code requires it, like their name, address. I suggest email address be added, um, a- and other things, like if you look on the same page ten, subpart D, the way it's currently written, which can't possibly mean what, be what's intended, is when you get a certificate of registration, in essence, uh, you will get a certificate of compliance after successful inspection. It doesn't say that it's a gap filler, it's a, it lets you stay there until you have an inspection which you must pass to get approval. The way it's currently written, if you get that, I think it says, the, inspe, regardless of the inspection, you will be approved, which surely is not what we mean. Uh, and I'm trying, I'm trying to find ways to, to be fair to landlords, but also to be fair to the legal process of how, what it means when, the rights and responsibilities, and that would be a responsibility, I think.
But I don't wanna, I don't want the sticker to go away, because there's properties out there that, that have a little sticker that says the unit's been registered with the city.
And I'm open to that. That was a change suggested by, by Steve, and I, I don't know the reasoning of that one.
Do we do stickers anywhere?
We still do, yes.
We do.
That wasn't my change, so I don't, I don't-
It's a very cumbersome process for the administrative staff to, uh-
Oh, I see.
We thought a registration, a certificate of registration would equate to that.
Can you come to the microphone?
We, we felt that a certificate of registration, once the a- the applicant applied for it, would suffice until such time as it was inspected. If it, if it was out of compliance, they would get a deficiency notice. If it was in compliance, they'd get a certificate of compliance.
Okay.
And I-
The inspection, from my recollection, from twenty years ago, was more for the tenant, so that the tenant knew that the property had been inspected.
Well, that's kinda what I was thinking, that the sticker, if it, if a tenant was co- was looking at a property and they saw the sticker on there, then that would give them some, some level of comfort, that it was registered with the city and therefore passes, uh, but, but you're not, you're saying that's not-
And the fire department and the police department, when they came to those structures, I believe, is that not correct, Justin? The registry.
Don't check the phone.
The conversation, the pressing, I know.
So the sticker, so the, the stickers, so I'm wrong in that, in that assumption that the sticker, i- in my mind, if I'm a, if I'm a, a potential tenant, um, and I'm looking at a property, seeing the sticker would, would ease my mind that the, the property is registered with the city, passed the inspections, but that's not the, not the, not the case?
Um, I don't know how it was envisioned initially, um, my, my thought process was to, uh, simplify the whole process and just give them a certificate of registration so that they could exit the building and, and go about their business.
I can see where that would be kind of a problem too, because it's a three-year inspection cycle. So if I register my properties and I don't come up until the third year, and I don't get an orange sticker until I come up, then people are gonna think something's wrong with my property when there's not, cause I don't have a sticker.
Listen, three years, you could easily get, I mean, I don't know how a sticker is.
Can't the tenant ask for a copy of this form?
Three times you pay, you get a new one.
Can't, can't the tenant ask for a copy of this form? I s- I assume, I, I would imagine any reputable landlord would.
Would, but would they know it exists and, and?
About, remember when we were all talking that we should have it up on our website, all the registered properties, so anybody can check and see if the property they're getting ready to rent has even been registered. That would be-
If, if I could maybe speak to, um-
If if I could maybe speak to, um, Councilman Ellis' position.
And where does the certificate of live, before you get into that? Where does the certificate live?
That will live with the owner of the property.
Okay, and so they don't put that on the property?
I, that may be a possibility.
Yeah, okay, all righty, okay.
These are primarily the two books that we utilize for property maintenance. Property maintenance code contains everything that you need to do to inspect the property. I don't know how many pages it is, I'll tell you that. The existing building code has three separate levels that it's based on alterations you do or addition you do or just existing constructions you do.
Can you speak in the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Uh, once we get into these things, we use those books when construction takes place or alterations takes place. These are for the existing building as it stands today when we go in there, without any alterations to it. So, um, to clarify that, the more the more important thing that you need to know, and this comes right off the HUD webpage, um, supplementing model building codes. It says, "The minimum property standards establish certain minimum standards for buildings constructed under HUD housing programs. This includes new single-family homes, multifamily homes, and healthcare-type facilities. HUD minimum property standards and how they supplement the model building codes. Until the mid nineteen nineties, HUD maintained separate minimum property standards for different types of structures. Since that time, HUD has accepted the model building codes, including over two hundred and fifty reference standards and local building codes in lieu of separate and prescriptive HUD requirements. However, there is one major difference, and it goes into durability. And that's what that document, I believe, and I have not read that because I got it at four o'clock today. I believe that document details durability of processes in a dwelling, not the physical condition of the property. So I just wanted to express that as I as I do my research on it, because Al, I've not read them.
That's what I was trying to ask, if you'd seen it or not, I think you got confused on which one you were looking at. But yeah, I was trying to see if you'd had a chance, because I wanted your opinion too before I left to see.
Yeah, I have not had a chance or an opportunity to even read it.
Okay.
So so do you do you perform inspections on on HUD properties or on section eight properties?
Um, I believe unless they supply us with a document that says that they have been inspected and approved by HUD, we do.
But if you do have those documenta- that documentation, then then you don't inspect those properties?
There's a provision in the city code that exempts them from inspections for five years.
Okay. So, um, di- are you aware of, uh, we we have the five different code options laid out in in Iowa statute that that a city may may use it if it wants to? I don't know what, you know, we're we share a housing market here in the Omaha and Bellevue area. Are you aware of what standards they they apply for their inspection programs over in Omaha and Bellevue?
Um, I cannot speak for Omaha. Bellevue has minimum housing standards built into their city code that pair with the property maintenance code.
Okay.
And I believe Omaha enforces the property maintenance code, but I I couldn't give you that as an accurate statement, sir.
Okay. So I I guess my my other concern here is i- is about process since, and this isn't necessarily directed at you at all, but I mean, we've we've had a lot of differing proposals and things put on our put on the 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 table here to try and grind all this up into into one piece of 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 legislation here for first reading and then hand it to, uh, the the community for for public hearing comment. Uh, I'm concerned that that we we set up a ad hoc committee to, uh, to get feedback from a p- from a group of individuals that that you felt were well qualified to help advise on the crafting of this particular ordinance. And we we haven't given them a a copy of any ordinances or amendments to to work with and I guess provide advice back to us as to what the what the best legislative option is. I I guess that's that's my concern.
True, and the ordinance that Steve drafted, I did supply to everybody on the committee, and I did ask them for feedback, and I did tell them that I would pass that feedback either on to the council or or to Steve or to whoever felt was appropriate. Um, I intended, um, to ask Nate if he can push the button that makes the this readable format so that I can get that to the to the-
Oh, the clean version, yeah, I can, yeah, the clean version. I and I struggled, when do I, and I thought, if I wait any longer, it's 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 worse. I I really think it's, the idea, I I want to get it out there because at this point, people would have until the the second of three readings. If it goes to three readings, they'd have three weeks, and this would give an opportunity to have a good discussion. Because I certainly don't want to do it at the, that would be completely unfair, I think, to at that meeting. People have shown up to speak on a draft that I don't want to be the active draft anymore.
Well, that's what I was, I don't know what goes for, that's why I was asking Dick, like, how do we tonight get so that what goes on there? That's what I'm confused about.
There'll be a vote to accept one of the amendments or not. I mean, we'll either, somebody will make a motion to, and there'll be a vote, whether it's going to be what was originally submitted in draft.
Mm-hmm.
He would make an amendment, we would vote on that. Mr. Ringenberg would make an amendment, just like we've always done on every other ordinance we ever do.
Yeah, so it's usually not changed quite as much stuff. That's why I didn't know there was any problem, but there's not a problem with changing quite that much.
The other option would be to, if you can get it hammered down to a pretty tight form tonight, would be to work on it until your special meeting that I think you're trying to get put together and then have a second consideration prior to the public hearing.
Yeah, that would that would-
We had to obviously read through all this to make sure we're okay with this.
It's it's a little bit of rolling thunder in that it wasn't on the agenda, it got asked to be placed on the agenda. I'm trying to roll it out to the ad hoc committee so they can see it. And I want to keep them informed, and and we said if we wanted another meeting, I'd hold that, and I and I mean to do that.
Can I ask-
I just don't know how. Well, I, nobody's contacted me and said they want to do it, so.
Hey, Matt, can I ask a question on that? Um, it it the, because it was mentioned earlier that the committee was going to be, Al had mentioned the committee was supposed to write the ordinance, so that that's-
No, we weren't to write the ordinance.
Okay.
I tried to make that clear.
I was confused on that, yeah.
We brought together people that had a vested interest, that had professional knowledge of the business, that, uh, be they landlords, tenants, uh, real estate agents. And we met for two hours, I I honestly think we exhausted, um, the ideas in the room. I said, you know, I said, there was talk initially, we're we're going to help draft this, and and I said, I don't want to mislead you. I I think there's three votes here that they want to move forward with a full inspection. And in light of that, I think that we ought to focus our discussion in that realm. And and the discussion talked about, what about an older home that has a bold wall? How is Steve going to look at that? And and I felt that people left the room, um, feeling pretty good, but I promised them, as I got stuff, I'd roll it out. And I'm telling you, I got that information, um, late Wednesday afternoon. Jody and Marcie were working on it till five o'clock on Wednesday, so I g- I sent it out via email Friday or Thursday morning, which was the soonest I could get it out, but.
Well, I I guess it comes back to my point that I was attempting to make, and that is at the conclusion of of that meeting. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I misheard something or I didn't interpret it correctly, but I think it was Mr. uh, Mr. Angrath that that asked for a for another meeting as soon as the the draft was was out there and supplied so that they could have a look at it and discuss it and provide feedback, uh, to you and the and the committee. And, uh, and that-
I think I complied with that. I mean, I got it Wednesday night, I sent it out Thursday morning. I said, um, if you want to hold another meeting, the the public hearing's the fifteenth, I'm I'm willing to do that, I, you know.
Was it part of the packet that was online too?
Why would they get it before we got it?
I-
They didn't, you got it Wednesday.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, I think you did that.
Yeah.
I, okay, I I-
It was online also.
I guess I'm just going to to what what the impression of of the the committee members were, and it was their their impression that that there would be another meeting for the purpose of going over a draft and providing recommendations as to how that would be implemented or potential issues or why not.
That's still on the table.
I I think that could be done.
Before the council ever saw it?
I really do, well-
You mean, is, no, I want to make sure I understand, because I was there too. So you think that the indication was that that they were going to work on the draft before it went to council?
Well, y- yeah, and and I'm sitting sitting here looking at at, I was reviewing emails, and and I guess they may have might have gotten that impression from from the mayor because on on the thirteenth, he said, yes, an initial draft ordinance, the thirteenth of October, said, yes, an initial draft ordinance has been completed at my suggestion. This was done to give the committee a point of reference on which to start their discussions. And so so, yeah, that that implies to me that we were going to put a draft in their hands in order to get feedback so we knew whether or not what we were voting on was going to be implemented and and attain the the desired result.
Though surely I I I I take the mayor's word that I doubt he expected a group to write the ordinance.
No, I I don't think it was that they were going to write, but at least provide material feedback and and recommendations on how it could be improved or or corrected.
But nor should that replace our job here to review the materials, to have a discussion, and to move the ordinance forward through the process. I mean, this is no different from any other ordinance change where people give their opinions. Um, actually, it's a little bit different in that in that Mayor Walsh put together a committee, that's not normal.
Point taken, but but we we are, uh, we are considering a large amount of detail, as has been put out here tonight. We we are not the subject matter experts on, uh, on this material. We we have Mr. Carmichael, his his staff, we we have landlords, we have other representatives on the committee who have considerable experience in this field. We would be well advised to get the get the, uh, get their input into this process to make sure that that we know that we have a a workable product.
And I don't know how to do that any better than I'm doing it. The ordinance is completed. They got the ordinance within eight hours from you getting it, probably. Don't remember exactly when I sent it, but I know I sent it the next morning and it came out late on Wednesday night. I said, read it, send your comments to me. I'll make sure it gets to the right person or persons. If it if it needs a second meeting, I'm willing to hold the second meeting. And and the public hearing's on the fifteenth, so we've got time to do that.
We actually have more time than than normal. We've got three weeks, so so whatever version is passed tonight, there's three weeks until the public hearing. That's an extra week for people to absorb it. I mean, granted, Thanksgiving is this week, and people probably aren't going to set aside their turkey and read this ordinance.
I hope not.
I hope not.
It'll certainly put you to sleep faster than the turkey will.
Thank you. But, uh, yeah, I I certainly don't mean to imply, I I I take your point and agree that the the public and all all concerned should have a have an opportunity to speak. And and whether it's true, I I certainly wouldn't speak to the mayor as to any meetings he might want to call. He certainly has that prerogative, I'm not going to tell him what meetings he should call. But I think all of us, like, speaking for myself, I've I've been meeting with lots of people, actually more than anything else, this week, and and have pledged to do so going forward, uh, because any group that wants to meet and talk, I want to talk with them, but that's why I want to get this out now. I didn't want to send it to all of my colleagues before. I think it could arguably-
Yeah, it wouldn't have been appropriate.
Yeah, I don't think it would have been appropriate. And I thought, okay, what's the soonest I can do it? We got we got it, and I've I've now given you my suggestions in a public meeting at the very next public meeting. So I I'm I'm trying to be in good faith here, and and I really want people to talk to it, I do. That's that's why I did it now.
My only concern that's different from normal, when you said this is like, is that normally we don't have quite so many pages to try to quickly. I mean, we have, and I, you know, we're probably not going to have time to actually read either any of these technically before we have to make a decision on what one's best. And Steve hasn't got to see it, so we can't ask his input, we can't ask, I mean, that was my concern. So as long as Dick, if we get to, we put something through, whatever it may be tonight, just to put it through, but then we can, if we decide, okay, we want to make Nate's changes, which are substantial enough that I think, or Al's changes, either I think are going to be a big enough change, we're going to have to have four readings. I mean, as long as we know that, I just don't feel comfortable with either.
Yeah, I I I have no dispute with that, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Right, no one's seen it, that's what I need, that's what I should get.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I I would agree with you, you're quite right.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So Al, everything-
I'm a Nancy Pelosi moment here.
Al, everything you want us to read, um, that we have in front of us, correct?
Y- yes, and and, uh, and again, the the beautiful thing about this is is all the materials you you have are accessible through through the HUD website. So anybody can get on there and see see what they work with, what they what they have, as opposed to the code standards that we're presently using, which are copyrighted, and you need a cot and a thermos to really sit down and digest all that.
And and Nate, everything you want us to read, uh, in preparation is is in this one?
Yes.
Okay, and then-
I I'd be happy to send you a clean, but I didn't.
No, that's okay, I I don't need it, I I'm going to read through this in the break. And then Dick, you 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 gave us something also.
Yes, it is.
I I I asked him to draft something to hold the tenant responsible, because the landlords, many of it expressed over the years, definitely this week, particularly, a very legitimate concern that we we do not hold the tenants responsible under any of these things. And they ought to be subject to the same exact laws with regard to damage. And so Dick put something together that seems rather good to me, uh, about, uh, one section about the duty to report damage to the property, a section about the duty to report a disabled smoke detector, another section to duty to keep the leased premises free from nuisance, and then the punishments.
Where's the punishments?
At very bottom, yeah.
It's this like-
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
Um, and we could certainly talk about the different numbers or the various things, but I I I think as a matter of fairness to landlords, the the tenant has has skin in the game, so to speak, you know. That was one of the 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 most, in my own mind, to me, one of the mo- one of the strongest arguments that landlords had about Title seventeen housing, apart from inspections, just housing in general, was, you know, if 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 the landlord comes across as meeting the inspection, which the vast majority do, about smoke detectors.
Right.
And the tenant takes them down, it's been the same tenant, and comes in, why should the landlord get in trouble?
Right.
And not the tenant?
Yep.
So that that ought to change.
And and just to remind you, that's also included in the in the HUD standards, uh, that were provided to you in the CFR.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know, Justin, you-
Yeah, I just have a question for Councilman Ringenberg, just so I'm clear on what you're requ- From what I've read on the HUD website, the HUD standards are above and beyond those. And so I'm just trying, no, wh- where are you reading that at? Because, I mean, clearly on the website, it talks about HUD's standard is above and beyond the the local code. And in areas of the country where there are no codes, they actually adopt a standard off of the model codes. So I'm trying to figure out what page you're looking at, that, just so I know.
No, the the HUD standards are a separate legal requirement that is is made an option that can be adopted in in the state of Iowa. The the HUD standards are are used in order to determine safetiness and the safety and and health standards in order to qualify for their voucher, their subsidy program. But they are still a minimum standard of of inspection that that they have certified under law and made available to the states and the state of Iowa has actually adopted that.
What part, I guess, because I'm looking at the minimum property standards from HUD HUD's website. And very li- very clearly at the end of that, it talks about the code, the municipal code, whatever code the jurisdiction is in. And it talks about HUD is basically above that. It it adopts these codes, if you have your codes, then the HUD code applies above and beyond.
Yeah, if the city wants to layer on additional detail.
And just so I can finish, when when there are no codes, HUD goes out and seeks a model code to use along with their minimum standard. And so I'm I'm reading, I can read it to you right off the website if you'd like.
I'd I'd like-
I'm just trying to make sure I, when we're talking about whatever, you know, CFR, whatever, that we're talking about the same thing. Because from what I'm reading on their website, doesn't necessarily say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd I'd like you to send that that to me and help clarify that with, because I'm I'm reading this as a legal matter differently than than you are. And and where I'm where I'm coming across here is that I'm trying to condense the the amount of detail and complexity on this so that everybody can understand it. My problem here is is really with, similar to to the problem that many taxpayers and voters are are having with the federal government, where Congress votes authority to say the IRS or the EPA to write regulations, which then have the criminal force of law put behind them, and nobody know, and nobody can understand what it is that they even wrote. And so that's why I'm trying to to make sure that we're not emulating here at the city level, that that we are that we are taking responsibility for the for the ordinances that we're passing, that we can say that everybody out there is on an equal playing field, they can read these, they can interpret them, and they can be enforced quickly and easily as a matter of law. When we turn that authority over to, uh, to faceless committees, often, in this case, I think, in in the Chicago area or Washington DC, then we're really turning over our our legislative authority to to a different entity.
The question I have, um, because I I HUD standards are truly foreign to me. I've tried to catch up today, but there's some, there's a limit to what my brain can do in a day. up today, but there's a limit to what my brain can do in a day on a subject that I find really hard to understand. I am confused, and that's the question I have, and the only way I know how to say it is, forgive me, in like legal speak, but does...can anyone answer, does the HUD code incorporate the International Property Maintenance Code? Does it incorporate it as part of, or the entirety of...so incorporate in whole or in part, that code on the table there as the standards? So in essence, I saw the state statute, and you're quite right, I agree with your reading, that it says, and that part I think I get, that it says you can adopt various standards. And one of them, you're quite right, says the housing quality standards promulgated by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for Use and Assisting Housing Programs. Another one is that code on the table, and there are a couple others.
Yeah.
But my question is, does that other code adopt that one by reference?
No.
Okay. Because it kind of sounds like what they'd read before it might, and I'm confused.
No, I think you'll find bureaucrats out there who have written guidance that say that they think the IPMC is a swell idea, but that has never been codified either in statute or in regulatory guidance that it shall be used.
What...I did notice, and again, I don't fully understand it, there were parts in the HUD where it referred to the city's substantive standards, and I know I'm getting the words wrong, forgive me, where it seemed to contemplate there'd be something in addition to it, if I'm reading it right. And I might genuinely not be reading it right. So it kind of seems like it wants something else there besides it.
Well, as we previously discussed, you know, Councilwoman White had the notebook and the additional materials. And the federal government and other bureaucracies are famous or infamous for cleaning out additional reams of guidance to explain the guidance that they already have. And that's what that notebook there essentially does. And so if Mr. Carmichael wants to put out additional guidance saying that this is how we see or interpret the rules, or he wants to adopt what other individuals has done, then that's fine. That is guidance that he may provide per the ordinance. However, the final legal standard, which the landlord community and the tenants, for that matter, can be held to legally, is contained within that short guidance within the CFR portion that I gave you.
But if we create an enabling act that, which would allow the executive administration to promulgate regulations, they would have the force of law, though. They're not just suggesting...if we give an agency, a department, power to fill in the regulations, like you say, the federal government's notorious for it, the state's pretty good at it, too, in giving an enabling act saying, "You have the power, here are the ground rules, the main rules, and we give you the power to fill in the gaps with regulation." Those have the force of law. Like, if you go to court, until like the legislature says, "Nope, that isn't what we mean," and we overrule it, or a court says, "That's a nonsensical, arbitrary, and capricious," is usually the words, "standard," it doesn't mean that. I don't think regulations are just suggestions. I'm confused.
Well, unless we specifically provide them the authority to do that. And I don't think that another city department can draft regulations that have the force of law. They are, however, guidance or interpretations on if the inspector goes out to inspect a property, this is how they see and interpret what their findings.
What happens if I think the standards are just insanely over the top? How do I...I mean, if I don't follow them, am I outside of a safe harbor? Or if I do follow them, am I in a safe harbor? I mean, how much can I rely on those standards if I follow them? And let's say, or I don't like the regulation, what's my recourse?
I guess the recourse then is you come back and you look at that CFR language, if you will, because that is the firm legal requirement by which the landlord or the tenant is ultimately going to be bound.
I won't dispute that you can't, in regulation, contradict the purpose and the intent of the Enabling Act, but certainly, to the extent it's not challenged and it's used, it does have the force of law filling in the gaps.
Well, I guess until such time as the landlord comes back and makes an appeal to the Board of Appeals.
I'm just concerned, though, that, and I'm not against, I'm just trying to think...I'm worried that if it's the length, yes, it's quite long. I would like to see it shorter. I'm concerned, though, that if we have mission creep where it'd just get bigger by the back door, it'll be harder to know what the rules are.
Yeah, I understand your concern. And my concern is kind of, you know, that matter turned on its head because what we've done is by incorporating these other codes into the ordinance, is we have literally made those not regulations, but actual parts of the ordinance that do have the force of law. And if none of us really understand the level of detail, and it was said during the ad hoc committee meeting, that gee, it's so difficult for people to understand that we really need a few more inspectors to really be able to interpret it, then that's where I have pause to say, you know, are we really taking the right approach on this?
I see. I personally, I would, I'm ignorant on the topic of the HUD. I would love to learn a lot more, to the extent you have information. And I've asked folks, including a lot of landlords even today, the extent to which they've got information on that that will educate me what that means. I would love to have.
Yep. I agree. We could all use more education, and that's why I was concerned about the committee.
Steve, were you waiting?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Two points of water, Al. I don't hire people to interpret the code. We interpret the code, and they enforce the code that we interpret. So we didn't say that in that meeting. Secondly, please don't put me in the position that I have to subjectively enforce my own opinions on codes. That's why we had such a problem in this city before I came on board. Give me the opportunity to enforce a code that's written that the residents understand, and they know, and they can interpret also. Don't make it a subjective thing, because if it's subjective, then my own personal opinion is what I enforce, and that's not right.
I guess that's part of my concern. We have layers of additional detail. And then, like, again, the statement was made during the meeting, that the present standard is so complex, the inspection form is so complex, that the landlords really don't know how to handle it. Therefore, we need more city officials to do that interpretation for them. Well, if that's the case, then how are they supposed to be out there proactively fixing things that need to be fixed rather than being in a reactive mode? And if there's a concern there about subjectivity, I have taken some time to read the code standards. And even within that, it seems like, yeah, there's lots of things that can be applied subjectively, absolutely. And what we've done is we've multiplied greatly the paragraphs and sentences, which in turn can be interpreted subjectively. So we've really compounded the problem here. What we need is really clarity in the standard, but once clarity overcomes the ability to comprehend, then you've lost your audience. And that's my concern in a nutshell.
I appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
I can just say that without attaching any kind of standards that go with just this handful of things that would give any clarity, because it's really subjective. It leaves way too much open for interpretation by each individual inspector without a code to refer back to as to why they did something. I would have a hard time. So if there is something else that you want to present that would go with this, that would direct where that information would come from, it would be easier for me to be more open to it. But right now, I have a list of A through K with these sentences that go with it, but they don't afford any protections, you know. So it's like site says, "You can't have..." "The acceptable criteria for site and neighborhood may not be subject to serious adverse environmental conditions, natural or man-made, such as dangerous walks, blah, blah, blah." Then it talks about "free from disturbing noises and reverberations." Is that a railroad track? Are we going to...is Steve supposed to say, "Well, you can't have this rental because it's by a railroad track"? I need something that at least he could refer back and say, "I didn't make this up. This is where it comes from." And with something like this, that just scares me that, you know, all of it now becomes, with what you've given us and what I'm just reading right now, then it all just becomes their opinion. There's no code to cite, there's nothing to take it back to. It's just, Steve says it's by the railroad tracks. This thing right here says it can't have any serious reverberations. Done, you're not renting the house. I don't think that this is enough to protect the landlords or property owners. I think it probably puts them in greater peril.
Well, I guess, then my question is then, how much regulation is enough?
Enough that everybody feels like that when they take it to an appeal, they can say, "No, I have a licensed contractor, and this licensed contractor says that this should not be under the new, it should be under the existing building code. I shouldn't have to do this. And here's what it says in the written international code, and you're wrong." I have a licensed contractor that's telling you, "Steve, you're not right on this." But if he's only got this, where there's nothing to back it up, it's just these little sentences, Steve can say, "You know what? This is what the council said they wanted," which means I can do whatever I want.
Well, I guess...
I have nothing to say where I get this from.
I guess my question then is, if the HUD standards have been so problematic, why have they endured for over three decades?
Well, I don't think they are problematic, because everybody who enforces them has a training guide that's 144 pages long, and then they have Chapter 10 that they use with this. I don't think there are any Section 8 inspection people hired by the government going out and inspecting without the attachments of the chapter and the guide for doing the inspection.
But they're going to have a...
That's probably why.
That they're going to have a very lengthy set of standards and criteria that automatically become part of the ordinance. And so we are making this law.
Well, so would this.
That's right. But it's, I would much rather for people to have to digest and understand the meaning of that than the meaning of that. Now...
But they're only understanding with what you're saying. And that's why I said, if you can bring anything that is a go-along with it, it's going to make it easier for me to be open to it. But right now, the only thing you're planning on adding is this, not the chapter 10.
Well, again, go look at the HUD website. I mean...
I understand what you're saying, but I think you probably understand a little bit about what I'm saying. When you work for the federal government, the federal government isn't going to say, "This is all you have to do." The reason it's worked for the feds with Section 8 is because of all the attachments that go with it. You're proposing it with no attachments, and there's no context with no attachments. It literally says that Steve can say, "You can't rent this house because it's by the railroad tracks." I don't think that that's what we want. We don't want that, and that's what it says.
Before...
So if that's...
Before we had the international code, what standard was used for inspection?
There wasn't a state or a county. It was in 1927 when it first came out.
Okay.
It was called the Uniform Building Bill back then.
Okay.
It was the first building bill that came out.
In 1927?
In 1927.
Okay. So out of curiosity, how big was it back then?
I have no idea, sir. I'm a reporter.
So I guess what...
Now, I understand, but I just don't...
You know, it was just released in the news today that before the end of the year, the federal government is planning, I think, 3,580-some new sets of regulations just before the end of the year. Those aren't pages. Those are entirely new sets of regulation. And I see us kind of starting to go down the same path of where we're going to a code committee off in someplace, we don't know who they are, we're adopting their standards. And if you want a copy of the code, you either have to come to the library or your office or buy it because it's copyrighted.
Well, sir, every building official in the nation goes to an annual business meeting, and they vote on the changes. It's not somebody in Chicago that sits in Ways of Want and Taps and says, "We're going to make that the code." Every single building official that goes has a vote, and they're added up, and it's either approved or denied. It's the people, the local people, make the code.
Local people.
Me. If you chose to send me to the annual business meeting, I would have an opportunity to vote on those codes or those changes. That's how it's done.
Just out of curiosity, are there landlords that have any, too?
I have no idea, sir. I tend to be conservative and save cities' money. I don't go vote on those things. But if I did, I would participate in that process.
Now, I just can't make, I can't give this any consideration without an add-on to it, because, I mean, if we did this, if we literally approved that amendment just exactly how you've made it with nothing else to give me to ensure where the decisions are going to be coming from and what's going to be cited, I'm not going to have that. I'm not going to have Steve telling somebody that, you know, they have to take into account a railroad track, or they have to, you know, going through this, I'm going, "Performance requirement. The dwelling unit must have and be capable of maintaining a thermal environment healthy of the human body." Who's human body? Which human body? And what is that number? And so when we end up spending thousands of dollars in appeal cases because this is all we got, no.
I think the best, I mean, just for this version, I mean, for your, I think the best thing would be to find out from, I mean, there's a ton of people that read Section 8.
Yes.
Find out from them, how, you know, what is the process? How is it? That would make it easy. And I'm sure there's an explanation that's so sophisticated.
It would be.
I mean, I know a few friends of mine read Section 8 because it's easy. I mean, I'm sure there's an easy way to find out.
It's right here.
And part of it is...
And then incorporate that. I mean, look at both options and then...
Please.
Whatever...oh, I'm sorry. Whatever we adopt as a substantive standard, I would much prefer it's the elected body that says what it is and says, "Fair enough. We can't come up with every..." So there should be regulations pursuant to it, but whether it's that code, maybe it's not. There are other ones. Maybe there's a better one that fits us. Persuade me. I'm truly open to being persuaded on that point. But I really loathe, and it's no disrespect to any of the bureaucracy, any person who works for the city, I mean, no disrespect. And they've said they don't want unlimited discretion, but for this, if this body, whatever we adopt, we should either adopt a code somewhere, and then like this one, we don't adopt it whole cloth. You've heard me rail against doing that afterwards. Partly, that's why I have so much written, because I default from, or I defer from it, or detour is the word I'm looking for, excuse me. I detour from it when I don't think it makes sense. I try to make it make sense for Council of Los Angeles, and I may not be right, but I'm just trying to open the discussion on what things maybe we should talk about. I would much prefer, or if we wanted to write our own code, which I'm not terribly qualified myself, speaking for myself, I think it ought to either be we incorporate a code of experts and then with a bunch of exceptions, like my draft maybe, or we adopt some code. I think it's got to be this body that adopts the main operative bible, if you will. I don't want to leave that to bureaucrats, whoever they are. It's no disrespect to them. I just, they can't be voted out of office.
Right. No, I agree. I think we need to look into, read yours better and see what it all says. And I think we need to look at the HUD one you brought forward and see what's really done in real life with it. Because I'm sure there's an answer for both.
Yeah.
You know, and obviously, reading yours, we might have a whole different opinion of this, too.
Indeed.
If we did, I don't know.
Indeed.
If we haven't had a chance to.
Yep, yep.
And that's why I just want to make it really clear. I'm not saying I'm absolutely not in favor of looking at something else. It just can't be this subjective where it just leaves so much open for everybody to sue the city because...
To the contrary, I think as a legal matter, we probably have more liability to suit under the current regime than we do under a simplified regime. I mean, there's suits working their way through to Iowa Supreme Court as we speak. And I'd be happy to address that later with Dick. But we're already at risk because we have adopted so much whole cloth, and now we're assessing what are effectively additional fees and taxes on one group of people that are not being assessed on others. And, yeah, there's a lot of litigation beginning to build up over these various regulatory regimes.
And if the state, you know, if that happens and the state repeals, I've said from the very, very beginning, you know, if the state repeals that law, I can't see that I'd have any problems with us repealing it. But it is a law, and it should be enforced. And when we took our oath of office, we set an oath to enforce the state law. And that's what I believe we need to do. But I just want to make it really clear. I will stay open to other ideas, but I just don't think that it makes any sense not to refer something back to, something in writing to where I can protect myself as a property owner. I just feel like I have to have that. You know, I can't have Steve just willy-nilly saying things because they're so... because there's so, so little in here. And hon- honest to goodness, it's like anything else we talk about. There's no way this is being implemented by the government without all of this with it. This alone is not an inspection program. That's not an inspection program. It's a list of, of things they have, they want inspected, but everything in chapter ten says that this and the other part of the guide that tells you how to do the inspection, this is what they want their inspectors to do. So just getting the law without any context is frightening to me because I, I don't think, and, and I'm, I'm asking for feedback from the landlords. Read what he's provided compared to what goes with it. And let me know how comfortable you are with just this really basic stuff that I've already read you. You know, that it, there is nothing you're gonna do to protest it or appeal it because we didn't give that to you. All we gave you was, Steve can say it's too close to the railroad tracks.
Al, maybe you can help me on, on one point. Um, does this, does the, the sec- does the title twenty-four, which deals with housing and urban development, HUD, the housing, federal housing department, does, these are the standards to, I presume in that act, there's some enabling act that gives the bureaucracy the power to promulgate reg- regulations, which I grant you, they grant way too many of in federal register, but I think they've got that power, right?
Yeah, yeah, by, by federal regi- legislation, yeah.
So, so it is, so it is, it is more than this. This is certainly the, the main bit, but it's, it's interpreted by the bureaucracy, isn't it?
Correct, yeah.
So, so it is a dispute, I, I'm just trying to understand the, the, the differing arguments. Is a dispute whether it sounds like, forgive me if I'm wrong, that we're not arguing there shouldn't be some objective standard, we're arguing what it should be? Is that the argument? Cause I don't think anyone's arguing for a subjective standard.
Correct, yeah.
So, uh, so I guess if not that, there are other options, and you're right, state law points them out. I would wanna know more about if somebody advocates for one, like the, like, how does the federal government, what type of regulations do they do? How do they differ from the current one we use? And so then I'm, I'm in a position, which I'm not at all right now, to know which one accomplishes the goal of public safety, but at the least amount of government excess. I, I can't say that sitting here without seeing the, I need to know more.
Well, I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, but I know that, um, before the meeting started, I told Al when we initially did the self-inspection, we based it off the HUD. It was pretty easy to understand and, and people use that. But, uh, um, I understand what everybody's saying here right now that, um, and I think what Al wants is something that the landlords can look at and say, when they come into my place, I wanna be able to proactively make sure that my property is ready to be inspected.
And, and if, if the best answer is to come up with an ordinance that's three hundred and eighty-seven pages long in order to make sure that we spell out those standards with enough specificity, then at least this body will have taken responsibility for writing, putting that legislation out to the public and taking a vote on it, rather than passing on that, that authority to, to another body.
Well, we, there are certainly two ways. We, right now, the way it's, it's shorter, we, the way it's currently written and my draft keeps that way is it adopts the whole thing and then says selectively what we're changing. We could just adopt what we want. It would be the same substance, I think, because we're still directing. It, it, the ordinance though would be much longer because it wouldn't be in a book, it'd be in our municipal code. But I, I, I think even though we're doing it the other way, we're still, it's still us adopting it. If people think it's a stupid law or they don't like it, wha- wha- that council voted it in, and if we change it, we're the ones who changed it. And I, I do think the buck stops with us, whatever we do. To, to set the standard.
This is the code that this body adopted.
Right, and that's not even what, yeah, exactly. So we'd have to change it in other places too, not just in this part of the code, but I guess my question is, do any one of us have enough expertise in the field of building inspections to write a code? And what would make any of us think we have that expertise?
That's kind of where it brings me back to the initial problem I, I had with the process and how we were trying to come up with the best possible ordinance. And that's what I, that's what I thought was the purpose behind that, the ad hoc committee, was to help assist and advise us with that, uh, with putting this thing together.
Well, I think we have. We had an expert, we had the building inspector that, that does have that expertise, brought us a draft of, of an ordinance based on the expertise, not on self-interest, okay? That's the one thing we need to be really clear about. What he's bringing us is just based on his knowledge of, of what needs to be inspected in a building, not what I don't want you to look at, not what I'm worried that you're gonna look at. That's why we look at what he brings us. Then you got a book that is made up of all the inspectors around the country that know where the safety issues lie, what things need to be looked at in a building. And that's why I'm asking you, then, so we'll take on the challenge of putting ourselves out there. And what do they always tell you? If you hold yourself out to have expertise in a field you have no expertise in, like telling me how big a pipe's gotta be, what a water flow needs to be, that's where you get yourself in trouble. So I, I just have to question why we wouldn't use an existing code of some kind that's made up of people that are experts in the field. And if that's HUD, as long as it's got some corroborating stuff that goes with it to make it clear to me as a landlord, this is what they mean. I'm not saying I'd be against that, but right, but, but I just think we need to be really careful because I don't think any, I really don't think any one of us know enough to sit down and rewrite without taking things from that code. You know, if you wanna re-conglomerate stuff out of this and out of that, we might be able to pull that off, but to sit down and write this code and know what we're doing, we could endanger people's lives. We could make things even worse on landlords. I don't even think that's a, I mean, I just can't imagine-
And why would we do that? And we have an, an ordinance existing. Um, we have a building official who, that's his job and his expertise, and he brought forward revisions, improvements to the existing ordinance. So it's, it's, it's very simple in my mind. We, we study what-
Steve, how many appeals have you had on the exist- because we're using this code now. The only thing we're doing is we're going from an act, a passive to an active. All these inspections, the forms won't change, the inspection form doesn't change, nothing changes. How many appeals have you had? Is it something gets appealed a lot?
No, maybe one or two. Maybe, maybe three.
In how much time?
Five years that I've been here.
Five years? So obviously, you know, there's not that much-
The issue tonight, I, I thought was not about which code we use, it's about going from an active to a passive program.
I think-
The code has been good for fifteen years that they've adopted it, and suddenly it's bad?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. Why, why suddenly do we wanna change a code we never questioned before? We haven't received a bunch of appeals on. The code's in place now. We're not changing the code. All we're doing is we're saying what you were inspecting yourselves that you were supposed to be following the code on. The city's now gonna do those inspections so that they can ensure they're being done, not any other reason, so.
I think because there were concerns with the code all along, so this seemed like a chance to, okay, if we're gonna address it, this is a chance to really look at the concerns that have been brought. I mean, that's how I looked at it, it was just recent concerns, but maybe that's why.
I've never gotten an email with anybody saying that they- there's no appeals, there's no emails, there's no basis to think there was ever that this was ever the question. The only emails I've gotten from anybody has been they don't want this done, not with any specifics, just if you do this, people will be homeless. That's most of the ones I'm getting, which is pretty silly because, you know, we don't have all these homeless people in the other cities who have done it. Um, and then I've had some concerns about price, which has been a big concern for me from day one, was the cost of the program. So I've gotten those emails. Um, but I have not received one email that has said, you know, I don't really have a problem with you inspecting the property, I just worry about the code you're using. That has not been anything, I know, look, Carla's going, oh, 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 oh. Um, what I've gotten is, I'm following the law, it's worked for eighteen years. This is what I get on almost every email. It's one, one I got yesterday morning. Why are we changing something that has worked for eighteen years? That's the question. So let me ask you this. If it's worked for eighteen years and you're following the law that's on the books, what would be the concern of, other than the price, and I'm with you on that, but other than the price, what can possibly be the concern about an inspection program? Now, we'll do it tonight. I'm just gonna put that out there so that you know what I'm gonna ask you. Because the bottom line is, you cannot tell me in this breath that what we're doing is working and has for eighteen years. And then tell me in this breath, if you do this, every landlord in town's gonna have their property shut down and people are gonna be homeless, because that's an absolute contradiction of what you're telling me. Because you can't be following law now and then tell me that the houses are gonna be so bad that the people are gonna be homeless and, and that the houses will have to be tore down. And if that is the case, then I'm really glad we're doing this program. If it really means that these houses are condemnable and they're gonna get tore down, then I'm glad we're doing it.
So, so you made the statement that they are complying with the, with the program now. So I guess my question is, is have we defined the problem that we have developed this fix for?
Uh, the, have we defined the problem? Yeah.
Yeah, what's, what's the problem with the present program if the landlords are able to comply with it?
Well, shouldn't you wonder why they're concerned about complying with an inspection if they're complying with it now? That should tell you everything you need to know.
Enlighten me.
We have good landlords that are following the code, but we have a whole lot that are not. And if you don't believe that, you can just do a drive around yourself. You wouldn't even need to go in the building to know it's not complying and has orange stickers on the door. That's the problem. And you, I mean, how do you look at it any differently than that? I don't see how you can say we don't need this, they're following the law now. Well, if we have this, why are they so worried about somebody inspecting their property? See, we can do this right now. The building department can do this.
Yes, they can.
And, and we just have to raise the fee to let them do it because they'd have to hire inspectors to do it. Um, and, and you know, that is always an option. But it still would be the same thing. We'd still have to start inspecting these properties. I mean, how do you look at some of these properties where there's, the windows are broke out, the roof, there is no effective life left on it. You know, there's no front steps. There's one down on Second Avenue that hadn't had front steps in years. They have to climb a little ladder to get in the front door. Um, no, I don't think it's working. I think that the good landlords got penalized when this went into place because they were good landlords there then, and they're good landlords now. And nothing changed. We collect fifteen dollars, they turn in a form, and the bad guys are still bad guys and the good guys are still good guys. Nothing changed.
Well, now, you, you raised another excellent point and one that, that I was wanting to ask later on, but we'll go ahead and take it on now. Uh, the, the program says, uh, or the ordinance says that we will, uh, impose fees on, on the, the reference fee schedule. Uh, that fee schedule has not been attached, so we don't know what the fees are at this point. The, the, the fee schedule is not part of the, of the ordinance.
Did it just not get forwarded or what?
I thought, and like, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it referred to another section or someplace else where it appears.
So, a- as I read it, that they would be basing the program upon the current fees. Now, as, as I currently understand the, the numbers, and, and we may need to address this later on, but as I read the numbers, we're, we're do- we're doing somewhere in the neighborhood of about one hundred, uh, rental inspections. Those would be new inspections, not re-inspections per, per year. Probably, uh, enlighten me.
You, you can read the, the numbers any way you want, Al. Um, I have one inspector that goes out and does inspections, does re-inspections, goes to court, has to input data into the computer, has to meet with people coming into the office. Um, she does the best job that she can with the load that she's got.
Okay.
Um, I read the numbers differently than Carla reads the numbers different. Uh, I consider an inspection or a re-inspection still an inspection.
Okay.
It's an, it's a compliance inspection.
Okay, so give me a number of those rental inspections that, that she did last year.
Off the top of my head, I don't have that number, sir, but I have provided that to the council before. I, I did it two weeks ago.
Okay, but, but, but in any event, I, I-
It was right around nine to eleven hundred is what she was doing for a five-year average, I believe.
Per year?
Per year.
Two oh eight, Sharon. Municipal code fees, section two oh eight.
No, I was looking to see, cause I think you have this something before, I was looking to see if I still had it in here. Um, because I think what I found out was that, because I never could figure out why Carla's numbers didn't match. Well, we kinda got to the bottom of that. They were going by address. So, property, right. So you might go to, you might do an inspection of the property, you might go there three or four times. So in his numbers, an inspection's an inspection. Whether I go there, you know, they were counting it once for that property. Where his numbers are, Maureen went to that property and did this many inspections at that property. And that seemed to be where I thought we agreed that there was a, a discrepancy between Carla's numbers and his. They were going by address or by property.
Because an inspection is an inspection. It doesn't matter if it's a prop- same property, different prop- property. Inspector's going out and making an inspection.
I hate to muddy the water, cause I'm getting hungry. You know-
We got a council meeting I'm late for.
What time do you have to leave?
Six o'clock.
Oh, no. Your council meeting's at six?
Yes.
They, uh, um-
This is important.
It's six twenty-two.
You'll have that same issue going forward, I think, that you have to go back and-
Sure.
You al- you always do. Every time you issue a deficiency letter, notice, you have an automatic re-inspection. Maybe two, maybe three.
But it's still an inspection.
On how, it's still inspection. It takes time out of someone's day.
Right, makes sense.
Well, I, I guess my, my point is, and again, I'd like to get additional feedback from, from other folks as, as well to try and get these comparisons of numbers to, to work out because we're assuming that, that we're gonna have to do twelve hundred inspections per, per year uh, in order to, uh, per inspector, in order to, to make this work over a three-year, three-year program.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanna make sure that if, uh, if the program as presently described, we're, we're getting net efficiency out of one inspector, you extrapolate that to three, are we going to get to that number?
All, all I can tell you, sir, is that, uh, by hiring the correct individuals in the field and hiring the correct individual in the office that would handle all of the paperwork and calls that my inspector right now has to do, that takes out of her time in the field, I'm confident that we can do that. I'm confident that the landlords, knowing that we're going to inspect their property, are going to make them compliant. At least I hope so. Um, I would love to go out and say, everybody in the Potomac County Landlord Association is a good guy and we don't need to inspect them. But that'd be derelict of my duty. I have to inspect everybody. Now, I would love for you folks to give them a break, the good people that, that get to pass their inspection. Because they are good and they try to provide housing that's, that's minimally qualified for Council of Los. That's the intent of the property maintenance code, it's minimum qualifications. I would love for you to do that, but that's your job to do that as, as a council, is to, is to do that. I provided you with an ordinance that's a draft and, and you can mold it and modify it as you wish. Uh, but this is really the intent of making affordable, safe housing for the residents that do rent property in Council of Los.
And I think Justin explained it pretty well in that subcommittee. You know, we've got um, approximately a third of our residences are rental property. We're not, it's not at the intent of this body to drive tax dollars out of town.
No. Absolutely not. And you know, I think that, you know, a lot of the people that I've been talking to have, the one thing I will say, and I'm really glad to hear, is that, and I don't know why there's an assumption it would change, but I have had so many people tell me that Maureen has really worked with them. I had a visit today from a landlord and he said, the one thing I will say and I cannot deny is that she has really worked with me, you know? There's no way I can do this because of weather, I'm getting bids, but because of weather, it can't be done till spring, no problem. I don't know, I, I guess I'm confused why anybody thinks this is suddenly gonna change. I haven't gotten, anybody's telling me that, that the city has been unwilling to work with them. Now, when you don't wanna make a repair that's dangerous, you know, they're still gonna want you to do it, but I, I've just gotten good feedback in that manner is that she is really works with them on a schedule of work and tries to make it doable, so.
Sharon, that's one, that's one of the things that I, I really, I don't demand of my inspectors, but I try to instill in them, is work with the people you're, you're involved with, whether it's a building inspector, electrical inspector, or a housing inspector. You have a team environment, you, everybody has a common goal, is to complete that project. Some for some money, me for code compliance, a businessman to make money. We all have the same goal, so why, what, what is so hard about doing that? We, we have to work as a team to be successful, even today. Excuse me. Standing here, all of us have to be successful, and that includes landlords. So I don't think anybody's out against anybody in this. This is just a fundamental change that, that in my opinion, I, I believe it would be a good thing for the city all the way around, for the landlords and for the tenants.
Well, af- after we get this sausage ground, if you will, what, what's going to, when are the fees then going to be adjusted and on what schedule?
I originally attached that to the, uh, the first copy. I don't know why it didn't get to you.
Takes one reading, so it's probably coming to your final consideration.
And just, Steve, for discussion, we talked fifty dollars or less?
Well, we talked fifty dollars after, um, I don't know if it was our, our committee meeting we had or not, but um, Sharon and I talked, I went back and reevaluated all the fees. And I, I, the landlords have a valid point that they're subsidizing owner-occupied housing inspections, because that code does apply to owner-occupied structures. they're subsidizing owner-occupied housing inspections, because that code does apply to owner-occupied structures. Every one of your houses, we could go in and do that. We have reduced that down just for the dwelling portions of it to thirty-four dollars a unit for a two-year period, thirty-four dollars a year for two years. But that's seventy bucks now. And that's the best I could do to pay for the inspectors, take out, um, half of the, of one of the housing inspector's time to do only owner-occupied inspections and then move forward with rental housing as, as they can do that. Two, completely full-time, working non-stop at it, and one, dealing with the owner-occupied stuff that comes from the general fund. Actually, it all comes from the general fund, but.
Oh, yeah, but you know, we're.
Rental housing money, you could, you could equate that money to going to pay for this pro, program if you so choose to do it. There's some word for it, I'm not an accountant, so.
And that's, and that's enough? It's two dollars, that's less than three dollars a month.
It's a dollar and sixty-six.
Two dollars and eighty-three cents, so that's, that's, and that's enough to cover.
Well, I believe it is. And I may be wrong, but I believe that it is.
And that did come out of that committee meeting, and so that's why I've gotten a lot, you know, I've gotten people saying, well, the committee, the committee meeting meant nothing. The committee meeting was to get input, which has been incorporated. Yes, you can call for an inspection when the property's vacant. You know, yes, we addressed the, the cost of it. Um, you know, all of those things that were on that list when I left that day, I'm hoping have been addressed. I think that they have been. But I think that there was this idea, if we didn't come out of a committee meeting throwing it all out and saying it's not gonna happen, then the committee didn't work. And I, I think that's just not what was the intent, but I, I hope that all those concerns were addressed, and I'm, I didn't know that the fee schedule wasn't attached.
And
Yeah.
I'm not saying that we're gonna adopt the committee's concerns or ideas, but I'm saying they're gonna get heard, so.
You, you, you triggered my memory about the, the committee meeting. Uh, I think I, I asked about success stories or, 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 uh, attribute, attributes pro and con on, on how other cities have conducted their pro, programs. I think we cited uh, Dubuque, Cedar Rapids, and Muscatine, and, and you and I appreciate the fact that you latched on to that, and you said, by golly, that's, that's a good idea, we wanna get out and get those lessons learned from their programs. Who'd you have a chance to go visit with and?
Al, I haven't had a chance to blink on this. I've been working with this ordinance and other issues in my office, and I have not had a chance to travel to those jurisdictions, but I intend to do that.
So we don't know to the extent that their programs have been successful or unsuccessful?
I have not done that yet.
Well, I think what, and maybe I'm mistaken, I thought that, that, that that was part of the implementation, that's what was discussed that night. That's not part of the ordinance, that's part of the implementation. He was gonna go and watch how they implemented their, the ordinances. I don't, I don't remember anything about, you were gonna go talk to them before this ordinance was written. That was not what you said. You said that's part of the implementation.
I may have said that, I don't recall, Sharon.
That's what, I mean, I just remember, 'cause that was, because it was discussed, that's not part of the ordinance.
That's why I thought it was come before, because the, the whole point is to find out whether or not what, what is being written is going to be workable, whether it's going to achieve the desired result. And we, we can learn that to, to a great extent from the experience of, of other cities, 'cause a lot of them have done similar things. So, okay.
Is our ordinance, I mean, the only thing we're, we're not changing that much of the ordinance as it stands with the pre-draft before this stuff. I mean, so it's all on how a program's implemented as to whether it's gonna work or not. The ordinances are pretty much the same across the state, aren't they? Were there any real differences?
No, really, there weren't. Uh, there was, I mean, obviously verbiage differences, but, um, they all kinda ran the same process throughout.
Okay, yeah, and I guess we can pull some of those too, they're probably online. But, I mean, I guess I think that there's two issues. There's an ordinance that takes it from passive to active, which isn't the implementation of it. And then there's the implementation of it, and that definitely, I wanna see how other cities have been successful in doing that, but all the ordinance is really doing is changing it from passive to active, it's not.
I'd just like to know whether or not it's going to work, because if it's, hasn't worked the way it's expected to, uh, work in other cities, then we're, in essence, adopting the, the same, the same mistake and thinking that somehow we're going to be a special case.
Can we take a little break, please? I drank an entire bottle of water. Is it just me?
Am I the only one?
I need to go.
The only one. I don't, I don't know that we're pushing things forward, so should we just break till seven o'clock?
Don't we have to have executive session?
Oh, yeah.
But can we go the rest of before that?
Please.
No. We're going anyway.
You cannot go. I'll send the policeman after.
We're going.
Do we, do we need to do executive session now?
At Council of Savings Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Council of Savings Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call, and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council of Savings Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.